Good evening and welcome to this week's meeting of the Norton Board of Selectmen. Today is January 24th, 2019. The record show the three members present, Mr. Salvo and Mr. Bramall couldn't make it tonight along with Town Manager Mike McUns. We also have a joint meeting with the School Committee, which we'll convene shortly. Would you be pleased, please?
(inaudible)
Yes, after they do.
Chairman person Cohen, you want a convening meeting?
We're going to call our meeting to order.
Okay. And I'm going to turn it over to Superintendent Dr. Joseph Biata. Can turn it over to you and you can introduce your folks.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Mr. Chairman, thank you and welcome to everyone and thank you for hosting us this evening. I don't know when the last time it was that the Board of Selectmen and the School Committee in Norton had back-to-back meetings within thirty days.
You made history. We're still talking to each other, too.
Exactly, exactly. I want to thank Dr. Anthony Azar at Dighton-Rohoboth, who's the person who actually I had some coffee with at one point, we talked about this, and then he brought us over to Dighton-Rohoboth. And this is where the idea came in of saying, I think this is a great piece of information, not only for the school department, but also for the town of Norton. So with us tonight, we have a presentation coming in from Train Commercial Systems, and I think Leo McNeil, I don't know if he's up here yet.
Yeah, he's right behind you.
Leo McNeil is the Regional Director with them, and he has two of his colleagues, and I'll let him introduce his colleagues while when he starts. And I think it's an opportunity for us to gather good information for everyone and look at potentially doing some things differently down the road.
Okay. Mr. O'Neill? Evening.
Thank you very much. Good evening to you all. I brought the parting of the clouds along with me, right? I stopped the rain.
Did you bring the arc?
So thanks very much for the opportunity. I'm here to speak about something that we call performance contracting, and I'll be brief. There's a bit of information here, so if I appear to be going through it quickly, it's in respect for your time. But we'll handle it either way. You can either have me finish this and ask questions, or feel free to interrupt me along the way at your preference. As Superintendent mentioned, my colleagues Chris Marshall and Yaju Chauhan are here as well, able to help, and you can see their titles here. We work primarily with public sector clients throughout New England in this performance contracting model. A little bit about Train. Many of you have probably heard of Train. We're a global manufacturer of HVAC equipment and controls, been in business over 120 years. On average, one of Train's air conditioning units is installed every minute of every day.
We have one.
You have one? Hope it works.
Hey.
And we're a business of the $14 billion Ingersoll Rand. Couple of messages here, we know how to make buildings feel better and cost less, and we're a big, solid, stable company who's been around for a long time. So in addition to our reputation as a solid manufacturer of HVAC equipment and systems, we also have this dedicated energy services and contracting group who we represent. So we've done as a group $1.2 billion in projects to date throughout North America. They're comprehensive building projects with guaranteed energy savings is the key differentiator here. A lot of times in the public sector, you're faced with limited capital budgets, extensive capital needs in buildings, you struggle through trying to get projects updated, a piece at a time, a boiler here, an air handling unit there. All the while, the schools, all buildings are probably consuming too much energy and performing poorly all the while. So what we're able to do is look at buildings comprehensively, bring them all up to speed, fund the project largely with guaranteed energy savings, and produce the proverbial sunny and 70 in the buildings with long-term maintenance to make sure that that's sustainable. So we've got a highly experienced local team. All of our projects have been successful to date, which means that, as I mentioned, we guarantee the result in energy savings from our projects. If the energy savings that we project don't come about, we'll write you a shortfall check. So we're literally able to fund millions in needed infrastructure renewal projects with energy savings that we guarantee. So a bit about performance contracting. It's a proven procurement and contracting method. It saves time and money for owners. It's streamlined, there's single-source accountability for the normally fragmented components of design, project development, installation, and then most importantly guarantees. So, single-source accountability, one large company is responsible for everything in delivering outcomes. Variety of financing options available. Some folks use, you know, a general obligation bond. Many of the school districts with whom we've worked have used a TLP, a tax-exempt municipal lease, and that decision is up to you. So here's a textbook definition of performance contracting. Essentially, it, performance contracting enables you to use future energy savings to pay for things, and thus eliminates the burden of having to just wait until capital is available and chip away at projects over time. So again, a single-source approach, we do all of these things, in the interest of time, I'm not going to read all of these to you, but you get the idea. Rather than go hire an engineer and an owner's project manager, and then a low-bid contractor, and then a commissioning agent, and then a maintenance firm, we do all of those things, single-source turnkey. Again, this is from a presentation that we did a couple of weeks ago at the folks at, from your school district, and over at Dighton and Rohoboth. So a lot of these slides are from that. But the point of this slide is to just demonstrate pictorially how this works. We work for you as the owner, in this case, obviously, town of Norton would be at the top. Train is in the middle of everything beneath that. We help you to access any grants and rebates that are available, pursue alternative funding methods, and then handle whatever the scope is that goes across the bottom there, whether it's mechanical work, electrical work, roofing, windows, renewable energy systems, some are all of the above, we do it all. Meaning, we take responsibility to design it, bid the work out, manage the construction, and deliver the results that we guarantee. This is a quick projection that we did for Dighton and Rohoboth several years ago. This is one of the ways we like to start our conversations, and we've done the same with Norton Public Schools. Let's not spend a lot of time on this, but here's Norton's preliminary benchmark analysis. So with the, a couple of years of utility bill consumption history from the schools, and some basic building information, we've compiled this high level, we're highly confident that these numbers are, you know, plus or minus 10%. So there's a high likelihood, the cost savings column that you see, the third column, is $183,000 a year. Those savings would be from typical building improvements, boilers, HVAC equipment, controls, lighting, things like that. We're also projecting that you could produce some solar power throughout the school district, or the town for that matter. The cost savings attributable to that, based on this initial model, are $121,000. There's smart revenue, which is the currently available incentive program from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts that would flow directly to you, would help you to secure those funds. That'd be $137,000, that's per year. And then the total solar savings there. So you can see, the total annual cost savings in the $440,000 per year range would be available by optimizing your current buildings and adding renewable energy systems. What does that mean? It means that, this is just a summary of the same numbers you've just seen, but as I mentioned earlier, the projects are typically financed independent of the capital budget, using a typical pro forma, assuming say a 4% cost of capital, which is a little bit heavy probably, you could probably do better with a bond, just for projecting purposes, we like to be conservative. But using a 4% assumption and a 20-year finance term, that savings would support over $6 million in a combined infrastructure renewal and renewable energy services program. So you could install things like those listed at the bottom of the page, all of these, without capital outlay, and then have them pay for themselves with the energy savings that we guarantee over time. That's an eye chart, we won't do that here. When we met with the folks from the School Department, the message here was, we have an interactive Excel spreadsheet, it's an interactive development tool. If we were to proceed to work with you, we would go out and develop a range of projects in buildings, and then come back with a detailed list of individual projects, individual costs, individual savings, and they all roll up into a cash flow like this. And then we work with you to pick a project that makes the most sense for you, both operationally as well as from a budgetary perspective. So the benefits to the district, or to any municipal client, would be these. You bring a comprehensive range of facility upgrades and renewable energy systems, pay for it over time with guaranteed savings, avoid new capital expenses to the communities or taxes, measurably improve the quality of the learning environments and working environments in the buildings. Sunny and 70 is a term we like to use. Every building can be sunny and 70 and should be, and we know how to make it happen, and cost less at the same time. Green your facilities, people like renewables and green for all the obvious reasons now, so we would dramatically reduce the energy consumed in the buildings. And then last but not least, as part of the same procurement, in addition to being able to do all of the design, the installation, the commissioning that I mentioned, we're able to work with you for a term of up to 20 years to do ongoing maintenance, to maintain those systems and make sure that they do what they're supposed to do. We find as Train, we're in a lot of buildings all over the place, one of the biggest failures of mechanical systems is they tend to be installed and then not maintained. And this isn't, you know, buildings aren't set it and forget it kind of things, you need to maintain them. So we're able to stay with you to maintain these systems over the long term, which ensures that those energy savings initially captured, or repeatedly captured, and it's a sustainable activity over the long term, which is the ultimate municipal stewardship. So why public entities select Train a lot to do the work? Well, we have a unique cost advantage, being the manufacturer of the HVAC equipment and the control systems that tend to be the biggest pieces of the needs in any community. You know, everybody needs new HVAC equipment and controls. It tends to produce the greatest amount of savings as well, as well as producing, it's key to producing sunny and 70. So being the manufacturer, if we do a large project and there's Train equipment involved, it comes directly from our factory to you without anybody having to mark it up. And it produces rather dramatic savings when compared to the conventional process. I have an example in a moment. I mentioned earlier, we've got a solid track record in all of our projects. I know Joe and his colleagues have checked out some of those, and have done many, many projects throughout the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Over $100 million to date, delivered by the team who's here this evening. This is that example I talked about on the pricing. So the Old Colony Regional School District is down in Rochester, Massachusetts. Few years ago, they put together a competitive procurement for a project in their high school. The competing price, ESCO is an acronym, by the way, for Energy Services Company. The competing firms' price was $4.4 million to do the project, ours was $2.2. They called us and said, there's a mistake, somebody forgot a floor or something, we said, there's no mistake, this is our cost advantage. The fact of the matter is, you don't have a middleman involved, you're dealing directly with the things that you need, the manufacturer of the things that you need the most, and so that's it, we're happy to go to contract for that. We did that project, reduced their energy spend by over 50%, and those savings are sustainable today. That was about seven years ago. But it's demonstrable of the cost advantage available by selecting Train. So I took the liberty to put together, certainly not a requirement, just a projection of the timeline of the process that, again, we were speaking with Norton Public Schools leadership initially, but this would apply to you as well, obviously to the town. Here's how the process works. The first step is you issue an RFQ. This is qualifications-based procurement. This RFQ is a template that's already written by the Department of Energy Resources, so it's not like you have to recreate the wheel. So you issue the RFQ, then you select your ESCO, based on the qualifications of the company and how they line up with your needs. It's a great improvement to the procurement process, it's been in place since 2006 and used for hundreds of millions of dollars in projects throughout the Commonwealth. After selecting your energy services provider, you then execute what's called a detailed audit agreement. Essentially, an engineering agreement where we would come in and develop that list of opportunities throughout your community, whether they're renewable systems, building improvements, or a combination of both, and then come back to you with that shopping list in that Excel spreadsheet that I pointed out a moment ago. In the odd event that we get to the end of that process and you choose not to implement any of the projects, there's a fee associated with the audit agreement. It's typically in the seven cents a square foot range, it's a very modest fee, especially for the detailed information you get. But that doesn't happen, because by the time people get to that point, they're committed to proceeding with at least some of the projects that are there. So the point is, when you do proceed with some of the projects identified from the audit, we simply roll our development costs forward into those projects. So again, you've gotten all the way through this step in the process with still no capital outlay. So through the detailed audit, we've developed the scope of projects, submitted them to you with firm contract proposals with scope of work and guaranteed savings. You pick the projects that you want to proceed with, we execute an agreement to proceed, that's another template agreement from the D O E R. Secure the financing, and then away we go. The point of this is the timeline. If you wanted to issue an RFQ, January's a little late now, this was a few weeks back, maybe in February. But the point was, again, this is not something we're pushing, it's just stating what's possible. You could be in a position, especially with the schools, where mainly when we're renovating schools, it's best to do those during the summer for all the obvious reasons, to minimize disruption. We could do that. I know you have at least one steam and hot water conversion project that Joe mentioned that could be doable. So this is a very quick and expedient process, and we could be building things several months from now. So a few things from the Dighton-Rohoboth leadership ceremony. Dighton-Rohoboth did a phenomenal job of taking advantage of the opportunities available through this legislation in Massachusetts, so much so that it caught the attention of Train Corporate, and they decided to award Dighton-Rohoboth with what they call an Energy Efficiency Leader Award. To my knowledge, there's only three or four of those given out by this large corporation each year, and Dighton-Rohoboth, your neighbors, received one of them. So this is just a few slides from that that I thought would be of interest to you. This energy savings performance contracting that we're talking about, it's an alternative procurement contracting method. For those interested in taking a look in particular, it's Mass General Watch, Chapter 25A11I. It's basically described, as I've outlined in the past, it's RFQ, select a firm, develop projects, guaranteed savings, 20-year term. One firm provides all of these things, they're funded independent of the capital budget, and paid for over time either entirely or in part, that's a key point. You are not required to do only those projects that can self-fund completely. For example, if you want to do energy improvements in the schools and also replace a roof, roofs save some energy, but it's this much energy compared to the cost, which is substantial. So roofs and window replacements, things like that, don't typically pay for themselves. Yet you can still do those if you choose to through this process. A lot of people find this process convenient, cost-effective, streamlined. I'll give you an example in a moment, at Dighton and Rohoboth. You're familiar with the MSBA process, I presume? And several years ago, the high school over at Dighton-Rohoboth was involved in an MSBA program, which was subsequently voted down by one of the two towns. But the mission was to replace the roof on the high school, and the price tag to do it was $6.5 million. We just replaced that roof within the past several months for $3.1 million. So it was 6.5, through the MSBA, we're doing it for 3.1. And it's just a function of the streamlined process, eliminating layers of architects' engineers, all that which we just don't think you need to replace a roof. So this is just another part of the process, I won't belabor you with that. Another part of this procurement, you could do projects in phases. Once you select an energy services provider, you can have us work with you over multiple years, as we're doing with many of our clients. This is a snapshot of what Dighton-Rohoboth did. First thing they did was they needed boilers yesterday at their high school, and so we peeled off a Phase 1 project in 2015, it was $351,000, implemented the project within a couple of months, and had them up and running in time for the school year. While that was going on, we were also developing this Phase 2 project, which you see is much more comprehensive, $6.8 million in projects throughout their five-building district. And then following that, Phase 3 was a renewables systems project, it's 1.2 megawatts of solar that are installed in carports throughout the district. Those three phases are all funded from energy savings that are guaranteed. The last two phases, Phase 4 and 5, roof and windows projects primarily, were presented directly to the taxpayers for an up or down vote, and they voted to approve them, and we proceeded with those projects. This is just another view of the phases, you can get a sense of what Phase 1 was, boilers at the high school. Phase 2 is more comprehensive, a lot of things in there that people don't expect us to be involved in, but we do. Kitchen hood controls, for example. What can most kitchens in schools, the hood's on 24/7, taking heated air out of the building, and it's just because, you know, that's the way things run. We could easily modify that with some controls that simply operate the hood when cooking's taking place, and not otherwise. Saves a lot of money, and so things like that, we do a comprehensive view of the building. But again, Dighton-Rohoboth did a phenomenal job of getting a lot of things done. I think there were over $19.3 million in projects successfully implemented to date. We're still considering others as we speak. So they did three different categories of projects there, as you can hear. They did clean renewable energy systems in the form of, I haven't mentioned yet, the biomass boiler plant. So there's a wood chip boiler plant at the high school that is the primary heating source for the high school. It costs less than half the cost of oil. Last we looked, in fact, it was closer to a third. Wood chips are just really, really inexpensive, and they burn, you know, it's a carbon-neutral fuel, and they love it. And at their steam podium every year, when we go in and speak to the kids and their parents, we bring a pile of wood chips and put it on our table in the gym, and everybody wants to know why we have landscaping materials. So these aren't landscaping materials, this is the fuel that heats your high school. So we bring them back, give them a tour of the wood chip plant, which we could, you could do that, by the way, if anybody wants to go and see that. It's a great example of a renewable energy system in action. They also get incentives for both the biomass boiler plant, as well as the photovoltaic systems from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts each year, over a 10- and 30-year periods, respectively, as I understand it. It's in the millions of dollars of incentive checks from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. That's in addition to the energy savings they get from the less expensive fuel and making their own power. So clean renewable energy systems, next category is energy conservation measures, the things needed in every building, boilers, HVAC equipment, electrical transformers and lighting, et cetera, all of those things they did. And then last but not least, the capital items typically handled as one-off capital projects, roofs at two schools and windows at two schools, all done as one cohesive procurement under one contract in partnership with us. This is the way they financed it. The first three phases, they chose to use a tax-exempt lease purchase agreements that were authorized at the School Committee level. For the other projects, they went to the taxpayers who approved them and issued bonds for those. So in summary, what did they do? $12.5 million in projects, all paid for with guaranteed energy savings. In fact, that middle bullet, those projects produce over $16.5 million in guaranteed energy savings, utility rebates, and annual renewable revenues over the term, the 20-year term of the agreement. And then at the same time, that's $6.5 million in windows and roofs. So as Dr. Azar over there likes to say, his buildings are now prepared for the next 25 to 30 years, they're good to go, they've got all their boxes checked. They've tightened up the envelope with the roof and windows, they've got high-efficiency systems producing sunny and 70 in the buildings, and they're good to go, and they're saving a ton of money, and helping the environment. So just a couple of pictures of the arrays, there are a total of 12 different carport arrays in Dighton and Rohoboth, there is three of them. Here's another one. We work with you to size these and put them where they belong, based on size and capacity and all that. And we're, in not particular, by the way, about carports, we don't have a thing about carports, we'd gladly put solar panels on the ground or on roofs, but this carports was just the best application for them, it's what they wanted to do. That's the biomass boiler on the left. On the right is a building that we built specifically to house the fuel. So a truck backs into that garage door, pushes out tons of wood chips, which are then raked into the boiler through an auger system automatically, and again, it heats the high school. So in total, their annual energy spend was reduced by 62%. Their guaranteed energy savings that we're guaranteeing is over half a million dollars a year. There were over $620,000 in rebate secured from the utilities that we did on their behalf, over $2.7 million in solar and biomass incentives from the Commonwealth. So a great, you know, financially sound venture. So the operational benefits are these, comfortable equipment, comfortable learning environment, precise ventilation control is tied to CO2 in the classrooms, so that saves time and money. The systems are monitored full-time by us to make sure that everything's doing what it's supposed to do. Their Facility Director, who is Dave Nappi, can actually access the systems from his smartphone, so he can turn on a classroom from anywhere, or a gymnasium, or whatever it needs, or one school, or it's just a great, you know, modern technology. 75% of the electricity now used by that district is generated on-site with the clean solar panels that we put in the parking lots. This is a quick snapshot of the environmental benefits associated with the project. Lot of miles driven, a lot of cars taken off the road, trees planted, et cetera. Just a massive reduction in carbon footprint for those buildings, while improving their operating condition for the long term. So moving forward now, what happens now? We get to maintain those systems over the long term, working collaboratively with the district. We are required to measure and verify and report on the energy savings each year. If the savings fall short, we need to write a check. That's never happened, and it won't happen here, we don't miss. You can imagine, if you're going to be in the business of guaranteeing energy savings, you get it right. So we get it right, and virtually all of our clients see not only the guaranteed savings, but 10% or 15% more than that typically. So that's it. I probably, I think I went through that really quickly, I know there's a lot there, but I'm trying to be respectful of your time.
Well, thank you, William, that was a great presentation. I thank the Superintendent for School Committee for also for making this presentation happen. I mean, I'm personally, I'm excited, and I kind of understand the fundamentals of what you're doing, because I've had to retrofit buildings in the past, and I understand that you pay some money upfront, and eventually you get the cost back, the savings. Program works that way, no matter what you do, even your own home, you can do it that way. Obviously, we would be excited to jump in on the program and take a look at some of our town buildings. One in particular, I can think of, is a highway bond down back, which is a wreck, which would really, could really use some help, no fault of their own. No fault of their own, even like the ugly stepchild from way, way back. They don't get anything at all.
It's getting better, Keith, isn't it?
I'm not talking about you personally, Keith, unless you want to make it personal, we can do that. But I think it's, I think it's very important that we join forces here and make it all happen. The concept is amazing, and it's something that I hadn't realized, this scope, this bigger an issue. We do have some old town buildings that really need some work. You know, one thing that came to mind, we just spent, we're about ready to spend a lot of money on some new windows. You know, if we had done this a year or so ago, this would have been another factor in maybe taking this into consideration. We're talking about building our own solar farm, we're about ready to do an RFQ. You guys might be, that might be part of this whole process, maybe we talk about that. You know, it's about 60 acres that we're talking about. So I think there's some other opportunities here, but anyone else want to? Joe?
You know, Bob, I know that in my six years here, one of the things I always hear from you is that we try to put money aside for capital on a regular basis, but as you knows, there are some years that it's really light. And one of the things that interests me is that we recognize having five buildings, that we're a big chunk of things that happen in capital over time, or going out for big bonds that require, you know, net payments every year that are costly. And I kind of just feel like we're leaving money behind when we could potentially get some matching funds through trying to become a green community, which we are right now. Recently, the town just passed through your recommendations, solar energy within town. We know ourselves that the School Department has some lands available as well. The accountability piece over 20 years, instead of going out every three years for a bid, like Mike and I are going to probably be talking about with other areas, is something you can stop doing. Preventative maintenance, Wade's here. We had no preventative maintenance until six years ago, when I hired Wade and put him on board. Literally, we had a line item with zero. That line item is growing too much, and I'm not seeing the return on savings of energy. Mike and I have gone out together, and Mike knows this better than I do, on electricity costs and all that. It works for two or three years, and then, you know, the industry catches up because of what's happening with solar. You know, cost avoidance, cost savings, and I think the other part that I think is important is, another comment that the Chairman, you always make, and that's the bond rating, making sure that the Norton bond rating is always, and I see this as a very potential thing, where you're using the money correctly. And again, I can only speak for the School Departments, but we've been talking a lot about, between the two boards, about projects that are maybe too costly, for lack of a better word, and how can we take it maybe a little slower? We know that boilers are going to be our biggest hit over the next five to 10 years. We know that's our biggest hit. It's our biggest, you know, penny to go after. And my concerns with those projects is not that we can't go potentially after accelerated program with MSBA, and that's another discussion to have as well, but my concern that I always have is, when you're not only replacing a boiler, but if you look at something like the Yell, you're replacing every single pipe that goes to every single classroom, because you're getting off of steam and looking at renewable energy or other types. And those all have big costs to them, and with fixed budgets that both sides of the town are trying to maintain, there isn't a lot of new revenue. So if we can avoid that, asking for more revenue by utilizing some of these state So if we can avoid that, asking for more revenue by utilizing some of these state grants on renewable energy, that we're getting zero from, zero. To me, that's a potential. And then the other part of it is, do you look at something like the long-term leasing, which I think is, you know, can be a less of a cost, even if you were taking a small percentage of capital or a small percentage of operating budget, instead of just bonding everything, which is a tendency that we have to do in the town, is we bond everything? I think this is an opportunity, at least from the school department, and I'll defer to you folks on your side.
One question on technology. Let's say we go into a 20-year agreement. We know things are changing fast.
Sure.
Photocells are changing fast. I can grow my hair. I think a lot of things are going on, what's left of it. I think it's important that, just so I understand, if 10 years from now, if the technology improves, do you guys come in and do upgrades, or you just stick with the equipment that you start with, or how do you do it?
That's the beauty of this procurement, is that, as you saw, Dayton and Rehoboth did multiple phases over multiple years, so you have the ability to amend this one contract at any time throughout that 20-year term. So to your point, it's a great point about technology, but that also applies whether you're talking about your smartphone, your television, your appliances at home. Everything's, you know, modernizing exponentially. So, but it doesn't mean, that's not a reason not to proceed with beneficial projects today. So to your point, if something happens where a new technology comes along that's even more beneficial than what we've got in place, chances are, it will again pay for itself with savings, right? That would be the reason to proceed with it, so you could do an amendment to the contract and then upgrade at that point. Or, but the other thing is, though, these solar systems that we're proposing have a useful life projection of 30 years. So even if they stay as they are, they're going to be generating huge amounts of savings and revenues from the Commonwealth, so, but we could factor that all in. The short answer to your question is yes. If there's a brand-new whiz-bang technology that everybody just must have, and it's beneficial in a variety of ways, we can help you to assess it and then ultimately implement it through the same agreement.
Okay, and you guys pretty much do all the work, right?
We do everything. That's the whole point.
You have to follow the procurement as far as the prevailing wages?
It's a great question. So we always follow prevailing wage, but this is a comprehensive procurement. This satisfies all the bid procurements requirements. It's been around for 30 years, by the way. It's the best-kept secret. Everywhere we go, people are like, why didn't everybody know about this? Well, our clients know about it, and Joe knows about it, now you know about it. So the people with whom we work save time and money and have Sunny and 70 in their buildings, but it satisfies everything. So we do the procurement, I'm sorry, you do the procurement, put somebody like us on board and under contract, and then as part of that contract, yes, we do then the engineering, hire and manage all of the subcontractors, buy all of the materials. It's all us. We have a professional project manager who will work closely with your operations people. Let me turn over the keys when we're finished. We maintain it, but it's all us.
I guess the only question I have, Bob, from, on the, for the town, what buildings do you guys think? I know you already mentioned Highway, but what other?
I would say every building, because we've
So police, fire?
I mean, if we do get rid of this one, that's, but we still have that, you have a half.
Right, the fire station.
You have a number of fire departments, we've got the police department, we've got DPW.
Right.
We've got the library, the H, the council on aging building is still ours.
Right.
We've got some satellite fire stations that we're using for other purposes now. So there are a number of buildings we should be looking at.
You may be able to do something at Everett Leonard, too.
Exactly.
Something there.
Now we have the Campy of Three.
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of stuff going on. We have to, we have to take care of, and, you know, Mike mentioned the train on the roof. Is that the original one?
Brand new.
Oh, just replaced the original.
Last summer.
Energy efficiency. It was like, we leave the windows open all day long. It wasn't working at all. But, you know, we do have a 24-hour man fire station next door. When you take into consideration the heating element, do you take in also air conditioning or they're just strictly heat, or how's it work?
It's HVAC. It's comprehensive infrastructure renewal, right? We'll button up the building envelope, we'll put state-of-the-art systems in it. We want the building to be properly temperature-controlled and ventilated when it's occupied and then set back when it's not, in the result of measurable reductions in energy consumption and corresponding dollars. That's how this all works. It's nearly not a lot of rocket science. It's just a matter of taking the discipline and the technology, you know, putting the technology in place, and then actually use it to its intended purpose, and all these good follow-on things can happen.
So we're in the process of looking at rebuilding a new town hall and a new council on aging, along with a community center. You know, and we just started the process, we're long from it, but we're just starting the process. But the question would be, if we did get approval to do these projects, is that something you guys could get in at the ground level and help us with, or is that?
We can certainly help.
I mean, it's going to be brand-new stuff, so I'm assuming it's going to be stuff that would be energy-efficient.
One of the things that communities consider an advantage is to standardize on technology. As you mentioned before, technology is advancing. Train's not the only company that makes building automation systems. There are several companies that do it, but if you end up with three or four different manufacturers in your building, which people often do as a result of Chapter 30B, you know, hire the low guy, whoever it is, and you end up with a mismatch, then the poor guy who's supposed to be maintaining this stuff for you has got to learn four different systems and four different manufacturers, and it's just not the right way to run a railroad, so to speak.
I've been preaching that for years. We just had a meeting a while back that I talked about that, how we need to start buying the same kind of equipment, so we don't, we can have one person take care of it.
Standardization obviously makes sense for that reason. So one of the things that you could do here is if we end up working together on a performance contract and say, start with the schools and put some technology in those buildings, that building automation system I referred to that you can access from your smartphone would be in the schools, and perhaps you would decide then to extend that to your town facilities so that you have uniformed technology in all of your buildings. The way to do that would be to simply inform the engineer when that time comes that you're deciding as a community to standardize, and then we could certainly help with that. We've been through that a number of times. We know how to help you to do it. It's doable. It's logical. It should be done for a variety of reasons. It doesn't often happen, but it should. So we can certainly help with that.
Okay. Bob, I just wanted to piggyback on a comment about HVAC. We've doubled the number of classrooms since I've been here the six years, and having to under federal IEP place, because of students' health issues, classrooms with HVAC system. And of course, they're window systems. They're not efficient. We know they're not efficient. They don't have a long-term utilization, that they're using more electricity than we should be using. So that's another example of some of the long-term issues to discuss on our side as well. But again, it's all about not the school department and town, just town.
But even our new schools are old now. You know, and it's amazing when you start thinking back, that, you know, this equipment's going to start failing, and we're going to end up having to figure out a way to
And so the question is, the perfect example is the middle school, right? So in 1997 building, right, if you don't put a plan in place today, which we have a preventive, full preventative plan down there, but if you don't have that plan in place and you aren't spending that money now, then you are, every 30 to 40 to 50 years max, you're looking for a new building. That can't be sustained over time, not with a huge demographic shift that we're seeing in the Commonwealth of an aging population, less students at the K-12 level even, or even college level. You have to come up with something creative, and I think this, we're leaving money on the table.
I have two questions. I know this was kind of put together as a markup thing, but it did say the high school roof solar panels, didn't we decide that that couldn't be done?
No, we wouldn't, that's an area where you could do that, but that's not necessarily an area we would do that. We would leave all of our schools' roofs for discussion, but we've already, with Leo actually at the, when we went to DR, we actually mentioned that the high school for us is more about carports.
Yes.
The Yell is more about carports. The LGN becomes a little bit of an issue. We probably wouldn't look at anything on the roof there unless there was a new roof put on first, but again, that can be part of a whole project that could significantly cost less. I think we're years away from that discussion on that building. The middle school, we've had, as we know, we've had a history of that roof, and knock on wood, it's doing okay right now. But we also have ports down there that would be another area, and then the JCS would probably be mostly ports as well. And if you haven't seen them, what's wonderful about them is two things. Number one, there's the savings in energy, of course. Number two, you don't have to worry about not having lighting in the evening when you're going to a meeting at a school or a town meeting. As you know, when we come out of the auditorium, even though every light is on outside, it's still very dark. And you might take away a little plowing, too, you know, just because you don't have snow falling underneath the ports.
My second question is, we're already under the agreement with the window project.
Yeah.
We pretty much already started that. Part of that was that they were going to do something with the air conditioning units in the window. If we were going to go with something like this, we wouldn't need that anymore, so what would replace it?
So what's, each of the windows, each classrooms has a window casing at the top that's literally a pull-out in instead of a cut-out. So now we have to cut the windows and put in AC. The new windows that you order now, traditionally, almost every school now, what you do is you have one window in the building at the top that's just a pull-out and slide in the AC.
So it wouldn't be a big deal to not?
Correct. Exactly, exactly. It would be more efficient long-term to look at, you know, traditionally, it's your guidance office, your front office, and your auditoriums that have the AC. This would kind of change that around, especially where we have very specialized programs where you need, you need to have that. And it's a growing number. It's something that we just can't stop. Every summer, I think that I've been here, we put window units in.
We call those window shakers.
Yeah.
Respectfully, they're not the best way to condition a building. We'd probably have some other ideas as to how to go about conditioning your classrooms in a better way that would be more comfortable and cost less, incompatible with your new infrastructure and not interfering with the windows.
Even better.
I mean, obviously, if you're not worried about having to stick air conditions in a window, you could use a different kind of window.
Yeah, we could do better.
It'd probably be a lot more efficient than those styles, so. Anyone else have anything?
I think my only other question is, I know that we, you know, the schools have already started the process with Train and having the meeting, so what do we look like as a town? What's the timeline? I know what the timeline is for you guys, but what's our timeline to kind of decide if this is something that we want to do, or?
So you got to put out an RFQ, and from that, you're probably, you're going to get a bunch of companies.
But do we have to decide as, as both of us, that this is something that we're interested in doing? Is that something that?
Yeah, I think we should take it and put it to a vote, and I think, you know, to find out, make sure that both committees are in agreement to this.
Yeah.
But I mean, to me, it's a no-brainer, and especially if we can start taking those cost savings and putting it back into,
Right.
into our budgets. I mean, it just makes sense to look at it. I love the idea about one company doing all the work, one company being responsible for it, not having to worry about the maintenance and upkeep. We know what that thing costs. It's a lot of money. Just the filters and stuff alone will bankrupt you. So it's just amazing how, if you start thinking about some of the minute details of it and how much money you can save.
Right.
It just, to me, it's a no-brainer.
Because I think at one of our meetings, we already decided that we wanted to move forward with this, correct?
We've decided that, the school committees decided that they would like to look at the RFQ process and then choose, go through that process, but that's the reason why, per our discussions at another meeting, that I said, this is an opportunity that if the town just wants to go out for one RFQ,
Yeah.
we're going to get, we're going to get a bid of how much it costs. We'd have to have a discussion about if we decide to do nothing, where's the money coming from? I'm sure we can have that discussion. But in my opinion, the idea of putting out an RFQ with the list of all the buildings and having a look at it allows for us to get the bids, choose a company, and then make a long-term, a short-term and a long-term decision.
And I agree, and I think it's important we do, we all do it together, because, like we talked, you talked about phases, you know, we will go through phases, but we should know from the ground up exactly what's going to cost us now and what our priorities will be, and go out for a five, six, seven-year phase, you know, a seven-phase program to make it, make it work. So, I mean, I'm totally in favor of looking at all of our buildings, you know, some may not be here, but eventually, but, you know, we're hoping that, but the ones that are, and I'm not trying to pick on the DPW, but
No, right.
that building down there, you know, these guys do everything they can to hold it together, but it does need a lot of work.
We're very excited, yeah.
I don't foresee in the future happening, having the money, to put in the money we really need to do to make that facility what it should be.
So do you guys need to take a formal vote, then?
I'm going to put it, I'm going to put it to a vote.
Okay. So I think that's what I'm wondering, is what's the timeline, what do you think the timeline for that is? Because we've got to kind of hold off, right, until we're all caught up together with you guys.
No, I think we can take that vote right now when we should.
Oh, you guys are, okay.
We can keep right on moving here.
Okay, all right, that'd be great. I didn't know if you guys were ready to do that.
I don't want to see a step backwards.
Okay.
If it's in motion, let's keep it going.
Yeah, that'd be great. Yeah.
Chair intending motion to support the exploration of the Train, exploration of the energy.
Performance contract.
Yeah.
So moved.
Second.
motion to second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
If that's unanimous. So along with the two managers, let's try to, let's try to work out the details and keep this thing moving forward. And I love your fast track. I love to see somebody come up and say in January when I start doing this, because, you know, government doesn't work too fast, so I'm always excited when it does, and obviously we want you guys to keep moving, so. If you need assistance from the town manager as far as our buildings go, we've got police chief, fire chief, DPW chief, you know, supervisor, I mean, all these guys can help you out and show you, show you around, so to speak. But I think it's a exciting program. Anyone else?
I don't think so.
Okay, well.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all the time. I can't believe you got all that done in 45 minutes.
We appreciate it. Thank you. School committee has another meeting, I believe?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah.
We appreciate you guys coming.
Thank you.
We actually, we just need to, a motion to adjourn the joint meeting and then relocate to the town hall break room for open meeting. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thanks for including us in this.
She was typing curiously. I think she had.
I hope you all fit, I hope you all fit in there.
I know. I know. I know, I know. Can we touch base after, because I was hoping we'd be able to stay for like the CBA part of it?
My life is about-
Touch base later.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Well, they have a meeting at seven forty-five.
Yeah, we have another meeting. We need to do time blocks.
Yeah, that's a yes. Okay, let's get back on to our agenda. The license is permits, we don't have anything under announcements, anything? Anybody have anything under announcements?
Not me.
Just here?
No, you know what, I should look.
We have announcements.
I don't think there's anything.
No.
Okay, under appointments and resignations, we have an appointment of a part-time parks and recreation coordinator. Mr. Nuss?
This is a part-time twenty-five hour a week position, and my recommendation is to hire Sharon Rice. Sharon is a resident of Norton and has extensive background in, she's an event planner and background in marketing and public relations, very knowledgeable in website and social media design, and has the computer skills that are needed also to run the office portion of the job. And she also runs a five-k road race every year, so she's obviously had to work with volunteers and fundraising and everything else in order to do that. So, feels should be a good person for working with the Recreation Commission, who's desperately looking for someone to be in the position, and that's my recommendation.
Sharon here?
No, she couldn't make it.
Couldn't make it? How many people actually applied for the position?
Two.
Two? Anyone have any questions?
Mr. Chairman, so my intent tonight coming in was to ask to have more time to look over the information on this. But, to be perfectly honest, Mike, I don't have a problem with the candidate that you've chosen. It seems as if she's very qualified. The only thing that my concern is, I did have some questions about this on Tuesday, and, you know, considering that this department has been a little bit of a challenge for us in the past year, I just feel like the courtesy of a callback to just the questions would have been helpful to me. Instead, I found out that night that it was already on the agenda. So, I'm not going to delay this tonight, but I just would like the courtesy of a callback in the future.
I think also, when we hire someone new in town, we need to have them come in.
Yeah.
Because I want to know who, who they are. I don't want to be walking by someone in the hallway and not know, not know who these people are. I'm not interested in holding this up, but I would like her to come to the next meeting.
Yeah, we will.
And I want to ask, I have some questions. I want to, you know, make sure we, we offer our support, make sure that we, we all understand what she's trying to do, so. Anyone else have any comments? I think, I think you're excited back there about getting somebody in place? Yeah, I thought so. Okay. Okay, any other questions? Chair intending motion to, well, actually, Michael, will you read that?
Sure.
Please.
To board of selectmen from Michael D., units town manager, notice of appointment of Parks and Recreation Part-Time Coordinator. I hereby notify the board of selectmen that in accordance with the provisions of Article Four, Section Two-B of the Norton Charter, acting in my capacity as appointing authority, I have appointed the following individual as Parks and Recreation Part-Time Coordinator, Sharon Rice. Said appointment was made on January twenty-four, two thousand nineteen, in accordance with the provisions of the Norton Charter, and will be effective February eighth, two thousand nineteen, unless the Board of Selectmen votes to accept or reject the appointment prior to that date. I specifically request the Board's acceptance of this appointment with an effective date of January twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? We'd ask again, Mike, to have her, have her come to the next meeting so we can, we can talk about what she's going to do. Seeing no other questions, chair intending motion to appoint Sharon Rice to the Park and Recreation Part-Time Coordinator's position, effective January twenty-eight, two thousand nineteen.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, for discussion. Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, thank you. We have two resignations. We have a resignation of Christopher Rodriguez from the Historical Commission, and we have a, also have a resignation from Sharon Rice from the Historical Commission. There's the Historic District Commission, there's the Historical Commission, and then there's the Historical Society. So we have three different ones. The commission really hasn't been that active in recent years, but, you know, I hate to see people leave that position, because we don't have, we haven't got that many people participating as it is, so. But anyway, we can send letters of thank you to both of them, and thank them for their time. And obviously, we'll be looking for some people to, to get on the Historical Commission, to replace these people. Have you any idea how many people are on that?
None.
I don't have it. There was time, there was a time we were talking about taking the Historical District Commission and the Historical Commission, combining the two, and making it one. We probably should be looking at that again.
Mr. Chairman, is it wildly coincidental that we just appointed Sharon Rice to Recreation, or is same?
Same.
Yeah, yeah, I kind of, I kind of saw that.
Yeah, you never know.
Yeah.
There's another Mike Flaherty in Norton, apparently.
No, there can't be. Come on. Okay, so let's, let's make sure we get him, send letters of thank you to both of them anyway. Okay. Okay, so, we did want to talk about a couple of other things with the school committee, but unfortunately, they had a seven forty-five they had to go to. And one of the things we wanted to talk about was the Community Preservation Act, and it's something that we looked at a few years ago. The town shut it down, you know, people pretty much called it a hidden tax, for whatever reasons, and, but the rules have changed, and there's a lot of different, different things going on with it today. It's changed the way that you, you build the fund and all that, so. You all have a copy of the Preservation Coalition in your, in your file. What I'd like to suggest we do is, I think we should form a committee to look at this. You guys tell me what you think. I think us looking into it probably won't be the right way to do it, but perhaps working with the school committee, we could appoint some people to, say a five-member committee, just to review it, come back with a report, plan on how we can do it. I know we have people that are busy and they don't have time for this stuff, but I think this is very important, and I want to make sure we take the time to do it right, so.
Yeah, it would be good if they had public meetings-
Yeah.
-that people could attend to before you-
Exactly.
-decide to try and move it.
So could we, maybe on the next agenda, could you just put that on there? We'll talk about forming a committee?
I think that, like, one of the big misconceptions people have, they think it's three percent tax added on to the value of their house. They don't realize it's just three percent on, one to three percent. You could do one on the tax itself.
It's adding, it's adding money to the tax. I think people have to understand that if we, we are involved too. We get grants, we get money. There's a hundred and seventy-five communities right now that are involved in this program, and they're getting money for it, you know? When you're looking at buying a piece of land or improving a building, that's how this program is supposed to work. It helps out, so. Anyway, let's put that on the next agenda, and then we'll talk about that, Michael. Okay?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Is there, charter have anything about what the committee size would have to be? We already have enough.
No, I would recommend five.
Yeah, appointed, right?
Yeah, that's all appointed. And if we get twenty people that apply to want to be involved, we can, we can make it as many as we want.
Right, okay.
But I think five is the minimum that you want to.
I'll make the under on the twenty.
Three's tough, you know? Five would be better.
Yeah.
So, we'll talk about that at the next meeting, anyway. We have a discussion on electronic message boards with Carol Advertising. Want to come on up, please? We've been here before.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. John Carroll and Bob Messia is here from Daktronics.
You guys, you can, they can sit there if they want to. You can sit down there if you want.
Yeah, that's good.
The last time that we tried to advance this, there was some concerns about the illumination and whether it would be affecting some of the residential butters, and we really weren't prepared to address that, but now we have some, some more scientific data on it, and Bob is a longtime employee of Daktronics, which is the premier digital manufacturer in the country, and he can speak to the, to the light emissions much more scientifically than I could.
Yeah, as I recall, I mean, even at the last town meeting, the board of selectmen at the last minute decided, I think most of us decided it probably wasn't a good idea at the time, but I think it had to do with a lot of questions that we couldn't answer.
Yes.
It wasn't the fact that, you know, it was maybe something we could do. It was a question of, a lot of questions came up, and we weren't able to answer those questions. So hopefully, you can do some of that this time.
Yep, that's what we're here to really add, just answer questions and concerns, and then, like John said, bring up some, kind of just some discussion. What we did was we put some light analysis together for the location.
What locations are we talking about, John?
Well, essentially, we, we were looking at a stretch of roadway along four ninety-five. So I asked Bob to, to do one on, on one end of that area, that overlay area, and one in the middle, and then one at the far end. So it's basically three emissions studies that should give you a pretty good feel for the three different likely areas that locations would probably go.
Are they all on the same side of four ninety-five?
All on the same side. That's the only, that's the only place they could go from a state standpoint, anyway.
If you'd like, I printed out three of these that actually we can point out the locations if you'd like, if you want to look those out.
We can share this, we can share this.
There needs to be businesses in the area.
Thank you. Which the front page has that same light analysis.
Okay. Can I have one more?
Thanks. Front page has that. Sorry. Bob. So looking at the, the map, looking down at four ninety-five, that's on the southbound side of four ninety-five along South Washington Street, two oh-two South Washington, there's three different locations, proposed locations, and they're all side by side with each other. See, we basically did three different light analysis.
Yeah, that would be Lopes, that would be, I'd say, Lopes. Basically, Lopes Drive, then Bodak and Roads, and then Plantation Products. That would be the three sort of, this one, I think, is Lopes, Bob.
Yeah, that is Lopes.
Yeah, and that's, that's South Washington. That's Bodak and Roads, so.
So basically, it's, if you're looking at the drawing, that circle, what we do is we do an actual light analysis of each location, and that is showing a double-sided digital billboard facing four ninety-five north and southbound. And what we use these for is just to show what kind of light is going to be in that area, that general vicinity. If you look at the circle, that outside circle is seven hundred and fifty feet, and then it's five hundred feet, and then it's two hundred feet. And if you look straight on at the zero degrees, that's if you were looking straight at the billboard. And then those are the angles out. Now, what that's showing is the foot candles measured at the, displayed at the lowest intensity at night. So it's basically showing it's a very minimal foot candle reading, and there's really nobody in that circle impacted as far as residential.
So what you're saying is the, the light from these signs won't shine beyond seven hundred and fifty feet?
Correct. Well, even at seven hundred and fifty feet, you're down to a minimum at zero degrees, it's point oh-two foot candles, which is minimal amount of light. I mean, almost neglectable amount of light. Now, the billboards have, and in that packet, it kind of just gives an overview of, the way they work is that bright sunny day, they're a hundred percent bright. They have a photocell that's constantly reading the ambient light outside, and then that will automatically dim them as it gets darker, down to four percent, three to four percent at night. And that's what that photocell does. So even on a, a dark thunderstorm day that comes over, that billboard will dim down to maybe twenty, thirty percent. It all depends on what the ambient light conditions are, and then brighten back up when the sun comes out. But the biggest concerns that we typically talk about is the darkness of night, the middle of the night time out there, that photocell will bring it down to about three to four percent of what it is during the day, which is very important. The other, the other thing is, photo, they're a very directional light. You know, we focus the LEDs on the audience, on four ninety-five. We're not trying to put any light in the area around it, we're not lighting up the area. And then there's louvers on the top of each module. In one of those pictures, you'll see the, the panel. So any light that's going up into the sky is blocked by louvers, and also the LEDs are directional, more pointing down toward the ground. So typical concerns we get are light skies at night. You know, if you look, if you live near a big shopping mall, off in the distance, you might see all this light from all the lighting. LEDs, these, this product does not do that, because the light is intended to go straight on, and it's blocking from the, it's blocking the light going into the skies, and it's far less bright. It's not made to light an area like a parking lot light is. So like I said, the graph really shows the three proposed locations, and then that circle is important, out seven hundred and fifty feet, there really is nobody in the area. Or even if there was, the light intensity is, point three foot candles is very minimal.
Will these be single-sided or double-sided signs?
Double-sided.
Double-sided. If you look closely at the circle, you can see there's the two sides, and that's why we have almost a full circle. One side, zero degrees, would be for the southbound traffic, the other side is the northbound traffic.
Anybody have any questions?
Okay, yeah.
Rick, come on up.
Sure.
Watch out for that wire.
Can I just? Thank you. Thank you, Rick Maka, five Washburn Street. You know, you mentioned the, the last town meeting, and the concerns was, the concern was raised about, about light of, reflecting on, reflecting on or into neighboring homes. That, that, that was not the only issue that was raised.
I know that.
Right, so at town, at town meeting, when I, when I heard about the meeting today, I Googled it, and I, you know, was trying to refresh my memory on the discussion that we had previously, and the first thing that popped up was, was recently Auburn. Auburn, Mass. just voted against billboards, and they were going to put them in the mall area. So they already have a mall there, and they, they rejected them because, one, they thought it was an eyesore, and number two, they, they thought it was a risk to, to driver safety. When I found the article from the Sun Chronicle that summarized our town meeting, those are the same two reasons that, that were offered. So, one, I don't think anything, and I know it's debatable, but I don't think anything on the driver safety front has emerged over the last few years that has been, been conclusive. I, I think what was cited at that town meeting, and I'll cite again, is the National Transportation, let me make sure I get this right. The, the National, U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration study that said, "If the task is simple and requires a single short glance, risk is elevated slightly not at all. However, if glance is totaling more than two seconds for any purpose near, near crash or crash risk is elevated by two times normal driving." So I think that was one concern, that, that there was a police officer who's a resident in town, raised parents of teenagers worried about distracted driving, raised that as well. So, so that, that clearly, I think, is still an issue. And then the second issue that was debated at town meeting was in terms of the town character. That, that the, the majority of towns in Massachusetts and the people are butters, Mansfield, I believe Mansfield, Easton, do not have digital advertising. I mean, so frankly, if this was so clear-cut, that this is no, no impact, it's no problem, then I guess the question is, why, why do the majority of towns not, not support it? And I think it's primarily for those two reasons. It's not in the character of the town, it is an eyesore, and number two, it presents risk to, to driver safety.
Yeah, I mean, the driver safety issue, we can probably just ask for some research on that, some information throughout public safety departments. As far as the character of the town, when they put four ninety-five in town, they changed the whole character of this town. There are people driving up through our town that weren't here thirty years ago. And, you know, we, we are criticized constantly for not being creative and finding additional ways to raise cash for, for a town that's strapped. This is just something we're exploring, not suggesting we're going to do it, but we want to look at how, how much this could generate in revenues for the town. And as far as four ninety-five goes, people drive, driving through, I'm not sure, I don't know about distraction. I'll have, we'll have to do some more research on the distraction factor. You have one up on ninety-five south and Sharon.
Yes, sir.
Didn't you put one up there a few years ago?
Yes, sir, yeah. There's a, where, where these would be proposed, it's, it's a fairly straight shot, so, I mean, I can understand the, the distraction concern, but I, I would say in my world, this would be the absolute ideal scenario, where you have a, you have a highway with a fairly straight shot, and the, there's been no incidents on ninety-five and Sharon.
That's what I want, that's why I'm asking. We can, we can do, do some research and find out if there's been any-
Yeah, I can, I can support that.
-any impact on that, on that. That's a one-sided window, right?
One-sided. There's a, there's a median strip there, so you wouldn't even have been able to get a northbound read, and there's also a ramp there. So there's a lot of state regs that we have to meet in addition to meeting the, you know, getting the approval of the town. There's a whole second layer, there's a whole second abutter notification, so it's a two, basically, it's a two-phase process. When the pilot program started, there was a, there was a requirement for a traffic study, and it, it required the applicant to, to do an existing conditions traffic study. So you'd have to say, okay, what's the data? One year, and then thirty days up to the installation, and then, once it was installed, then thirty days and one year after. So you had some comparable data, and the original approvals were conditional on that, that data. So I think that's, if that would be a concern, that's an appropriate concern, and I'm sure we, we would be able to address that. I, I personally would probably gamble that they'd be fine, so.
Well, if you could find some information about that, and I'd ask town manager to maybe have our, whose department, maybe they could reach out to their counterparts up in that area and find out if they've had any impact from, from that lighting too. It's been there now for a while.
Yeah, I'd say it's, it's probably three years.
May I?
Come on back, watch out for the wire.
I, I would suggest that if we use a three-year time period to gauge effectiveness of an accident that could kill people, that I'm not sure that that is a, that is a proper timeline.
Well, that's the only thing we have to work with.
I, I-
But we're going to work with what we have, and figure out what that's all about. host department, maybe they could reach out to their counterparts up in that area and find out if they've had any impact from, from that lighting too. It's been there now for a while.
Yeah, I'd say it's, uh, it's probably three years.
May, may I?
Come on back. Watch out for the wire.
I, I, I would suggest that if we use a three-year time period to gauge effectiveness of an accident that could kill people, that I'm not sure that that is a, that is a proper timeline.
Well, that's the only thing we have to work with.
I, I.
But we're going to work with what we have, and we'll figure out what that's all about. I mean, if it becomes clear that it is a hazard, then obviously we'll take another look. But, you know, we're,
Accidents.
We're, we're, we're in the dark as much as anyone else.
I know. Accidents, most accidents, I believe, are usually multifactorial. There's not one in issue that's at, at stake. Very often, it's, it's several things. Uh, but I would just suggest that if there's no conclusive evidence that one billboard produced one accident, that that is clearly nowhere close to, to an insurance of safety. I mean, if somebody wants to, if the, uh, if the advertising company wants to put up a bond and, and, and offer a guarantee of safety, you know, that, that would, that'd be one thing. But of course, I, I know that that's not, that's not going to happen.
We're, we're going to do our due diligence to try to find out what exactly has happened. Do you have any others?
Recently, I had gone in front of a zoning board of appeals with, um, with one, uh, abutter that was, uh, that was closer than any, anybody that would be, um, uh, uh, closer than any, any of the abutters in this particular scenario. So, um, and I have a location on Route one in, um, in Walpole, and it's a fairly new digital. And it's about probably six hundred feet away from a, um, uh, an apartment complex, the preserve. I don't know if anyone knows where the Red Wing is on Route one.
I do.
Uh, there's a.
Route one?
Yeah. There's, it's a good, it's good seafood there. But, um, we have a nice, uh, digital across the street. And, um, so I had, believe it or not, never checked it out at night from, from the, uh, from the backside of it. So essentially, when I, before the meeting, I wanted to just have, take some pictures and see if there was anything to be concerned about. And I, I expected a little bit of, you know, um, light off of the structure. And when I pulled into the parking lot, and, and there was, there was not a single tree. It's, it's basically all grassed between the apartment complex and the, and Route one. Uh, so it's, it's the absolute worst scenario, or in, in this case, the best scenario to, to show the impact. And, um, and I took a bunch of pictures. I really, honest to God, I could not believe it. The, there was a, a, a frontlit, um, board that was, um, that was there on, at the, on this other, opposite side of Route one. And my location was on the, uh, northbound side. And, um, it's, it was angled, so, so a V. Essentially, I'm looking into the V of, of the structure, and it was pitch black. There wasn't, there was zero light. And I, I could not believe it. And I'm in the business. I could not believe it. I was just saying, thank you, God. It was pitch black. There was, there was no light that was given off at all. The only people that were seeing that were the drivers on Route one. But you did see the light coming off the frontlit, uh, static board. So, so it was an eye opener for me, being, you know, twenty-five years in the business and seeing that firsthand. Shame on me for taking so long. But boy, it was, it was a very, very pleasant surprise that I can look anybody in the eye and say, there is no light that's being given off. There's nobody, and, and, and believe me, this, there's probably a hundred residents of this apartment that would have been complaining about it if there were. So there's never been a single complaint. You don't even see it. It's pitch black.
It's on Route one.
That was a pleasant surprise, and that's the truth.
Up on Route one?
Route one, yeah. And I, I welcome everybody to take a look, just so that you can verify that.
I, I have a quick comment and then a question. Um, one, the comment is, uh, I, I think it should be noted that the locations that, that are being spoken of tonight are not what we would consider to be comparable locations in, in Norton. The location in Sharon, most people actually think is in Walpole, number one. You know, it is not in the residential area of, of Sharon whatsoever. And, and clearly, Route one, which is a minimum of four lanes, four lanes on, on a, on Route one in a very congested, uh, you know, area of Foxborough, is certainly not, not, not comparable area, comparable areas.
Not in a residential area either.
So it, it is not, it is not, it is, it is not zone residential, but, but there are, there are a lot of, there are a lot of folks.
The greatest we're talking about is not in a residential area. No, more than residential, oh, really?
That is, um, if, if one, if one is to believe the, uh, the, uh, the presentation from, from the sponsor, you know, then that might be true. But, but, but certainly, there are, there are folks that are very close to this area. The second question I had is, um, has there been a proposal made in terms of financial arrangements?
I think probably pretty much what we talked about the last time, right? We haven't, we haven't got that far into it.
Right.
We're just starting to discuss whether or not we even want to do it.
Right. It, it, it was, it was upfront. It was, you know, um, a fair amount of money that was proposed upfront. Could, could I ask the select, uh, select men and women, um, given, given that most towns in Massachusetts are under financial pressure, as, as is Norton, um, why, why, why do you think this is not, uh, accepted in more, more towns in, in Massachusetts?
I think it's fairly new technology. I don't think it's been around that long. Billboards have been around forever. I mean, I can take you, we can drive through old towns and cities, billboards falling down. Billboards have been around a long time.
When, how, when were digital billboards first introduced?
Let me, let me ask a question for you, Rick. Please. How, when were they first coming in?
I'm, I'm happy to tell you that we were the first, um, up and running company, um, with Daktronics. There was a big press release and everything on it. Uh, it was, I would say, twelve years ago? I'd be, yeah. It was, it was, um, oh eight, oh seven. Um, and again, it was under the pilot program. We were fortunate enough to get our, our, um, our traffic data ahead of everyone else because of just, you know, good connections, uh, with the state police, uh, in Foxborough. So, um, yeah, it's, it's been probably twelve years. I, I, I'd have to guess. I could probably find out on my phone.
Mike, do you have a question?
Um, you mentioned Sharon and Walpole, that are your signs.
Yes.
What other locations that may not be yours? Um, West Bridgewater on twenty-four?
Yeah, West Bridgewater, that would be Lamar.
Brockton, Stoughton.
Brockton?
Brockton, Stoughton.
Bedford, Fairhaven.
Is Avon? I don't know if Avon has one or not.
I, I, I think that makes my point.
That there are several.
That, that, you know, within incomparable residential communities such as Norton, this technology has been around for ten to twelve years, and the uptake and acceptance of these digital billboards in residential communities has been very, very low because of two reasons. One, they're eyesores, and number two, uh, there, there is significant safety concerns.
And we, and we get it. We'll, we'll take that into consideration. Watch for the wire.
I find that to be very anecdotal. I mean, there are three hundred and fifty-nine communities here. We're talking about a handful that are around. So, uh, we're not really talking hard facts here, so.
Yeah, I mean, I'm curious, I'm curious about some of these longer, longer term communities. I mean, obviously, they are in commercial industrial areas that they're, they're putting these things.
They have to be.
Right, yeah. The towns that don't, we're not putting them in residential areas.
And I'd, I'd be curious about, you know, maybe some of the ones that have been around longer to find out, again, if it's had, if it's had any impact on traffic.
Sure, sure, no problem.
Issues like that. I think that's something that we need to, need to look into.
We can get some hard data on that. That's not a problem.
Yeah, okay.
If I can reiterate, reiterate it on what John had said, um, you know, going back, Mass Highway did an excellent job. Before, before there was ever a digital billboard in the state of Massachusetts, Mass Highway, they have an outdoor billboard division, outdoor advertising division, um, did a pilot program. They basically picked so many sites. John was part of that pilot program. And numerous studies on digital billboards from the Federal Highway Administration, and these are all documents. We can get you all this information. Mass Highway did an excellent job putting that plan together. It wasn't funded by the industry. Well, it was paid for by the industry, but it wasn't, um, biased to the industry, like Mass Highway had their own consulting firms that had to do these pilot program studies. Prior to the billboard going up, thirty days after the billboard, and one more, one year after the billboard had been running, these safety studies were done. And this was all dictated through Mass Highway Department. They're on board with it. They have very strict limitations on it. They're not going to, you know, they have different restrictions that John also has to go by.
No motion.
No motion, the brightness. They will come out and measure.
I would have to approve your sign?
Yes, we have. This is just, this would be just phase one, and then the state would, uh.
They have to approve.
They have to approve.
Oh, absolutely. And they will come out and measure, and they will come out and measure the light. They make sure it's not changing more than the ten seconds. They are very regulated on digital billboards. There are all four of them. The public safety messaging, you know, John has to be part of that, where, God forbid, there's an Amber Alert. You know, if, if Mass Highway needs to take that sign over for some reason, God forbid, a, a major emergency, that's partnership that John has.
Sharon Amber Alert on the one in Sharon.
Yeah, they've been used. I mean, there's some positive things to them, but there's numerous studies that, on safety out there, there really is. From the Federal Highway.
I would just sort of bring up, can the town, the state use it for emergency purposes like an Amber Alert? You have a problem here, they call you up or whatever, they can program and.
Well, the Amber Alerts are automatically, automatically. We have no control over it. They, they just, they just take right over. What's it? The National Association for Missing and Exploited Children. There's a, a specific agency that just takes right over. We also have public service announcements, state, state mandated for, don't text and drive, um, get your sticker, uh, you know. They have a, a bunch of content that they send us every month, and we, and we're obligated to, um, to run it as part of our rotation. And typically, the host community would get a matching amount. So if you guys had anything, um, you know, like a, a, you know, a town meeting, or a, or a five K road race, or, or any sort of, um, you know, pet project of Little League. We, and we do a lot of that stuff voluntarily, too. So there's a, there's a pretty strong public service component to it as well as the commercial component. So there's, uh, and there's, there's quite a bit of, uh, benefit along those lines.
Do you attach anything else to these? Because I, I noticed the one in Sharon has an antenna.
Yeah, in fact, that was, um, that was at the request of the, um, the fire department. The fire department, that Sharon is, um, ninety-five kind of cuts a swath of the town off. And they were having a very poor signal. So they came to us, when it was, when it was, um, coming to, to be, they came to us and asked if we could, uh, attach their repeater onto the top of the sign. And obviously, it was no problem. And, um.
That's what that is?
That's what that is. I think, I think it's called a repeater, but essentially, it strengthens the signal in, in a remote part of the town.
We have a couple around town here, where, on the fringes now. Is that the only thing you, I mean, I mean, other than the sign? Do you normally put antennas or anything else on it?
Well, oftentimes, there's, there's this small cell sort of starting with the five G. So there's a, there's companies that will. Sometimes you'll see the, um, the satellite, the satellite. Sometimes you'll see the cell component. That's on a case by case. I personally have refused to do that because I feel like if I'm renting the space to a customer, I want the customer to have the, the space and no distractions for, for them. It's their, so I'm, I'm not trying to, like, you know, um, I, I personally don't, don't like them. Now, now, if it's done in between the two faces, if you really can't see it, if it's, now, that one on, on, in Sharon, it's not completely offensive. It's, it's, it's fairly small. I mean, it's white, so if anything, I think maybe painting it black was probably the one thing that could be done. Uh, but they're, they're really, um, they're really not a, uh, sort of a distraction or a diversion from the content that's running. But some outdoor operators will try to, um, put all kinds of cellular components to it, and I'm, I'm not a fan of that.
I'm not a fan of it either, so we have to talk about that.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Eric?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I have a question. Can you just refresh my memory, because I can't remember. Who owns the property that this is going on?
We, we don't have anything, um, in place yet. There, there were previous agreements that were in place when we approached the town the last go-round. Um, I've been in verbal contact with a couple of them. So, um, essentially, we don't have any, anything inked up yet with any of the property owners, but I, but all the research has been done and the spacing, and so I know exactly who to, uh, who, you know, and one of the guys is, is on board with a verbal. And, um, and basically, the, he's a, he's a owner operator. The other two would be more larger operations where you're dealing with, they're, they're a real estate person, and it has to go up the, the food chain. So I've, I've kind of held off. I wanted to see how everything, um, is, is evolving here.
Who was it? Was it Bodick and Rhodes? Was that the?
I think that's Paradigm Properties.
Paradigm Properties, yeah, that's who it was. Okay, so that's my first question. My second question, just out of curiosity. Have you had any such proposals like this, uh, going up four ninety-five? It's just the only proposal that you have?
Um, I, I know that there, farther down, I don't know if it's four ninety-five, or, or, or it turns into twenty-eight, or whatever. The, the end of four ninety-five, I think it's in Bourne.
And then twenty-five?
The twenty-five.
Yeah, twenty-five. So it's right there. There's, there's a Robertson's, um,
Junkyard.
Junkyard there. They had an old sign that was up there for years, and, um, something's happening there. We, I know we, we put a bid in for it. I think the, the Robertsons themselves kind of, um, brought it to bear. And then they asked the industry for proposals. Um, so, um, so there's, there will be something going up there. And let me think. Father, more towards Lowell.
Right.
Uh, but really, nothing. Um, and a lot of times, it's because of the, the bylaws. It's not that the town is saying yes or no, but for, you know, maybe thirty years ago, the by, there's a, there's a pro, specific prohibition. So, um, and, um, there was one in Plainville. This has just popped into my head. There's a development going in on Route four ninety-five and Route one, Ledge, Ledgeview Development. And it's, it's the Plainville-Rentham Town Line. So, uh, 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 a newer operator that really did, doesn't have a whole lot of experience in the field, um, approached the town with mitigation and had a, uh, a, a, an approved mitigation agreement, and, and were ready to go ahead. And the, it would, the, the location doesn't meet state requirements. So as somebody that's been in the business a while, it, it's, it's almost like you, you know, you're happy to see that because I would have known right away that that's not going to meet the state, even if the town says, great, let's, you know, where do we sign? It's, there's, um, there's regulations on the off-ramp and spacing. The, the ramp has to be fully merged into the lane before the measurement even begins. So there's a lot of state, um, you know, safety requirements that, that, that are part of the whole process. But I know that they did approve, the town did approve that, and there was mitigation, um, involved, and, um, and it was the operator that was inexperienced that didn't realize that the, the location couldn't, wouldn't meet state requirements.
Mike, what's the dimensions that we're?
Uh, standard size is fourteen by forty-eight.
How high?
Well.
To be determined.
Yeah, to be determined. Um, I believe, um, uh, I would say probably eighty feet. Uh, sixty, sixty feet to the base. Um, and that'll all depend on what sort of tree component there is. I know in the Bodick and Rhodes, there's a real low, there's, there's low, um, low trees there. And, um, so you could probably put a lower board. Um, the height ideally would be probably sixty feet to the top. So forty, forty at the base. Just, you want, you want sightline optimization. So sometimes you'll have t- trees on state property that, um, that can't be cut. So you'll have to go a little bit higher, and depending on how far down the road, the, the sightline is, still, still works.
Thank you. I mean, Mansfield Airport's in that area, too, so we'd probably have to take consideration about that.
Yes.
As far as the height of it goes. The, um, I mean, I'm not sure how I feel about three of them, plunk, plunk, plunk. But I think possibility that.
No, just three locations, right?
Yeah, no, I think we were, we were going to back off that three. That, that, the three was, uh.
How many locations?
Well, I, I believe.
Three locations you're looking at.
I, I was, I was thinking either one or two.
Okay.
And if there are two.
The reason I'm bringing that up is you've got a developer sitting in the back of the room here who's putting together an industrial park on Main Street, East Main.
Right.
You know, that's on the northbound side.
Right.
And that isn't an industrial park.
Right.
There would be no homes around it.
Right.
So, you know, maybe, maybe you should, at some point, talk to those guys, too. But, you know, if we're going to put in one or two, if you put one on the south side and one on the north side, to me, that's, that kind of makes.
That balances it out. I, I, um, I had a, a brief meeting with, with, um, administrator, uh, units, and, uh, and, um, I, I believe I, we had a look at that site, and very preliminarily, I believe the ramp is, um, part of that equation, too. So I'm not sure it would even fly there. But we did have a quick look at that, and I, uh, and, uh, and I had actually previous discussions with the, uh, with the developers.
All right. Well, I mean, we, we'll get some more information together. And, uh, I think we're going to want to get some history on some of these other locations and.
We'll get some hard traffic data for sure.
Whatever you can get us, and we'll do, we'll do our homework, too. See what we can come up with. But, you know, we, we need to start talking about it, and this is, this is the first step. Are you going to continue to work with the, uh, property owners and see if you can?
Well, you know, based on this meeting, um, I, I think that, uh, it, it's in my best interest to, to see if I can't secure some locations, so that when we do have the next discussion, at least we'll have specific locations to, uh, to take a look at. And, um, so that would be next. I wanted to see how, um, how, um, everything went, you know, this evening.
Anyone have any other questions? Eric? Question, right? All right. Well, thanks.
Thanks for the time. Appreciate it.
You'll be in touch with Mike anyway.
Yes, I will.
We can leave you more of these if you need them.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thanks for the time. Yep. Are these all the same? Are these all the same? Yeah. Okay. Next on the agenda, we have alter-declare the water department's two thousand and five Chevrolet, Chevrolet Express. Next on the agenda, we have, alter-declare the water department's 2005 Chevrolet Express Cut Ban, T-9 as surplus. This is an old vehicle, Mike? You have some information here, anyway. There's a number of things they're trying to get rid of.
And these will all be put on Minnesota Ben.
Okay. So you've got 2005 Chevrolet Express Cut Ban, 2010 Chevrolet Silverado, 2500 HD Extra Cab, four-by-four utility body with eight-foot Fisher plow. We have a rugby dump body, cap shield with hydraulic hoist. We have older tires. You can't use those, Keith?
I haven't looked at them.
Yeah, there's a couple of things on here that I, I think we probably should let the highways guys take a look at. 55-gallon drum of oil.
I gotta look at that.
I think we can take that off the list. The tires, I think we probably should... Do you do the repairs for them?
For them?
Water department? You don't? You think we should take the tires off the list for now?
You can leave them on. They're good.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Because they're, well, water and sewer is an enterprise.
I know.
So Keith would have to buy them anyways. He'd have to bid just like everybody else.
Okay. All right. So let's go with the 2005 Chevrolet Express Cut Ban, 2010 Chevrolet Silverado, the rugby dump body, the floor loader tires, and there's a Generac generator down there too, that I guess is nothing worth saving. I know you need a generator.
Yeah, I know. I think it's junk.
Junk? Okay. You sell stuff. I can't call it junk.
I always get the joke.
Okay. All right. Sharon, take the motion to approve the items listed as surplus. The Chevrolet, 2005 Chevrolet, the 2010 Chevrolet Silverado, the rugby dump body, the floor loader tires, and the Generac generator.
Not the oil?
Not the oil.
No, not the oil.
So moved.
Second.
I can see that it has this material. Motion is second. Any further discussion? See now, it's a favorite. It's unanimous. Okay. Okay, next on the agenda, we have the discussion of road widening approval process for Condyne Capital Partners LLC. Come on up. Watch out for that wire. Don't want anybody falling down. You could probably move that thing back, anyway. So nobody gets hurt. So how are things going down?
How are you? Thank you. So I'll start off by bringing everyone up to speed where we are permitting-wise. And I guess our conversation is timely since we're talking about money, capital, and everything else. I just want to make sure that, once approved and once we're constructed and complete, we're talking $100 million project. So we're trying to get there as fast as we can. So any help is appreciated. And so we're proceeding through on, first of all, is Buildings 1 and 5. What we're terming as Phase 1, which is Building 5, 4, 7, and then the first retail building, which is up front.
So East Main Street is on the upper left-hand corner of that?
Correct. East Main, and then Leonard's here. This is, we're terming this as Phase 2. So that will be developed and constructed after partial completion of Phase 1. So we have Conservation Commission on the 28th. We've been continued on the planning board to the 5th until we get through Conservation. Building 7 is the exact same date, so we're in front of both boards, on both Planning Board and Conservation, same dates. As well as, subject tonight is the roadway widening. That is on Conservation for the 28th. We met with the Sewer Department two weeks ago, had a good meeting with Sewer out and down Route 123 to the culvert. And then we have a wastewater treatment meeting coming up on the 5th with Mansfield as well. And then the intersection is well underway, so that's being designed and coordinated with Mascot. So all of that's happening simultaneously as well. So we've done a lot for some of the mitigation. We've widened driveways. We've included a access area. So there's going to be a public access with a couple of car parking spaces here with a walkway going all the way down to a couple of the sheds that's back in the chipping and putting area. So we're moving right along, and we would like to get in as fast as we can. We do have an interested tenant that wants all of Building 5. We're touch-and-go on schedule, so we're trying to balance that as best we can to make sure that, once we're approved, we can get in the ground and complete on time for them to occupy. So we've got a time-sensitive schedule. Don will bring us up to speed a little bit on construction, so I'll tell you where we are on that. And then Mark will discuss specifically the roadways while we're here tonight.
Right, thank you.
Thank you for having us. My name is Don O'Neil, and I oversee the construction end of the Condyne Capital Partners. So we've designed the first building, which is Building 7, which is now 220,000 square feet. It was 258. We tailored it back for two reasons. One, for the potential customer, and one for Conservation and pulling it out of, away from, more away from the wetlands on the far right-hand corner. We've had extensive meetings with the fire department. We've had meetings with the building commissioner. Our drawings for Building 5 have been submitted. We estimate the building permit will be over $250,000 once his review is complete. He's working through the drawings currently, and we'll see where our next steps are. We're ready. Pricing's done. The GMP is done. The subcontractors are selected. So we're in the contract phases with all the subcontractors, as well as the master contract. We've commenced on Building 4, and Building 4 is the next one down, closest, which is another distribution warehouse. I think the drawing phase of that will go a lot quicker. We'll stagger each building by three to four months in between to get a jumpstart, get one up and rolling, and then focus to the next. After that, design is complete. We can commence on that, and then we go to Building 7. Building 7, they're all the same similar patterns in construction. So as we go from one build to the next, the A&amp;E and the design gets a little quicker and gets a little faster. But we're ready. We've been meeting with the, working with the road and the connections, the utility companies, National Grid, Columbia Gas. We've had an initial meeting with Comcast. So these buildings, we can build them quickly, but we need the vital parts to make these buildings run. And along with that, that's where Mark's been focusing some of his time on the roads. We've, in our communications with the fire department, sitting down with their team, we have elected to go digital radio transmission. We know that the town budget is tight. We've offered to pay for the upgrades down at the fire department, and they were very appreciative. That opens up the whole other end of town for future developments. And right now, their system's at max capacity. So we're working with them. It's the right move for both the town, and it's the right move for us for the future of the development. That gives you a little bit background, and then we'll go after Building 1, which will be the first retail. So we're looking, we have a good two years in front of us to get these buildings up. And again, time-sensitive with what's going on in the market. It's a highly sought product, but the location is why we're here, right off the highway and in. And with the sewer expansion, there's other possibilities down the road with that development.
Very good.
Any questions?
Anybody? Thank you. Now we get to the meat and potato.
I'm Mark Thib with Condyne Engineering Group. So I'll discuss the actual roadway project. The project consists of, the intersection design will be a separate set of plans. That's, we're working through that. ESC Group is our traffic consultant. So the widening plans that you've received that start where that intersection is, travels along Leonard Street, past our Phase 2 entrance, and ends right here. So it's about 2,500 feet. And what we are proposing is, so on the first stretch of the project, we have the intersection upgrade. We're going to have a sidewalk. Then we're going to have about a five-foot shoulder to the single white line, and then a standard double L line. And then on the same, again, we're going to have the other traffic line with another five-foot shoulder. And that will happen all the way up to our, so we have one entrance to our development here in the sidewalk. And that width will continue to this driveway where the sidewalk will turn into the site. It also comes into the site over here as well. And then after that, we're widening to a relatively standard 11-foot lane, traffic lane, with only about two feet of pavement shoulder outside of that. And the main reason, you know, we're achieving, we're actually achieving that width, is how I'm going to put it. We have wetlands on both sides. It's restricted. We're maximizing as much as we can, given the constraints of the project. We're actually trying to do all the widening on the southern side, which is, they are wetlands that we're up against, but it's also functioning drainage ditch. So by widening that side, where, you know, there's no tree removal, there's no major impacts to wetlands. We're basically relocating the ditch. It's being permitted as a limited project through Conservation. So we're allowed to do some limited minor wetland modifications. What we're also proposing is there's three existing culverts that convey, there's an intermittent stream in this area, another intermittent stream in this area, and then a perennial stream here. We're proposing to replace them with elliptical culverts. The intention is to try to, to the maximum extent feasible, meet some of the strong, stream crossing standards. That's, you know, it allows more light through these things, a little bit better critter access and things like that. But we're also confined to the restraints of the road. There's an existing water line, and where the road is relatively level, there's not a lot of ups and downs, so we can't just, you know, we can't provide a stream crossing that meets standards, because these are, those would be a massive, almost a bridge, you know? It's the real standards. So we're trying to meet them to the extent feasible for those crossings. We feel we've, and you also can't replace a small culvert with a massive culvert, because it affects the hydrology. You don't want to drain everything above, you know? It's constraining something, and, you know, that's what the entire area is based on. So you've got to balance all the different components of a culvert. So you can't just create a massive culvert and then potentially, you know, flood out below or drain above. So we're proposing to replace those three culverts at the request of Conservation for that road. And then the widening just continues up to the curve. We're actually, it's basically a straight shot, but the widening in this area, since there's more room between the existing edge of pavement, is happening on this side. So even though it looks straight, it just goes from one side to the other, so we don't have to dig up both sides against Conservation-related areas. On the plan, we were proposing a overlay and a full-depth reconstruction, or full-depth construction on the widening. However, we've been suggested to full-depth reconstruct the entire roadway. We're still working through numbers, but I don't know if we've officially just agreed to that, but I think...
We don't have final numbers in yet, but once we get to that point as well, I think it'd be appreciative if we could access as much help from you folks for that grant money and the application that we have in. Because I think that'd be beneficial to upgrade all of that. So...
We do have some borings taking place in the next week or so. So we'll also look at that information, but we're definitely not opposed to whatever we need to do to make it, the road last, you know, under the new conditions of the project. Lastly, just utilities. So an existing water line is available out in Leonard Street. We are proposing a gravity sewer line from the development down to a new pump station. So as far as Leonard Street goes, there's a gravity sewer line. Our other sewer will come inside our property to the pump station. So we have sewer line in that area. The gas company will need to run gas from Duncan, somewhere around Duncan Donuts is where their gas line ends right now. So there will be a gas line coming this way, servicing the facilities. And electric, everything else is overhead on poles. We are going to be required to relocate some poles, but we're working through that with National Grid. And that is the proposal.
We'll probably have to help you with the poles too, with setting of the poles when you get to that point. The intersection at the top, I mentioned it before, if, when you make your design, if you can design that intersection, do not allow trucks to go down any further than the industrial park. And I don't know how to do that. You guys are the experts, I'm not. If we can design the entrance ways so that, the industrial park has a clay shot, you guys can get your vehicles to there whatever way you have to. If we could get that intersection designed, and so if a 52-foot or one to take a right-hand turn, they could make it.
Yeah, you'll see the radius on this side is almost 100, you know, a nice, smooth radius. And there's no way a truck is going to make a left turn. So we've already, and it's actually a little bit at an angle too, but...
Okay, perfect.
We're already through Planning Board. There's going to be signage, definitely no...
We've already asked for signage to be put.
Things like that.
We're working on that, too. Now, the section that you're talking about, I know, I understand the wetlands issue, but you're ending your sidewalk at the very beginning of the project. And my understanding from what you're saying is the reason you're not going any further is because of wetland issues. My question is, at what point does public safety become a reality here, where, you know, you're going to have people, I'm guessing, that are going to be either on bicycles or walking or doing something to get to work? I know we're talking about putting, getting the bus to run down that fire at some point. I'm hoping you guys can help us with that. But if, taking away the restrictions on Conservation, if you had the ability to put sidewalks in there, would you normally do that in that area?
We probably would. You know, we're a goal of open, typically, we, you know, for a project this size, yeah, we probably hope to get it to that point. But just widening, when I talk about widening through this area, it's literally four to five feet is all we're widening, and it's going to be enough of a struggle just to do that, so...
Plus, there's good site visibility with the distance, so that road is almost straight once you get to that bend all the way up. So you can practically see from there all the way up to the traffic light that's going to be constructed.
Yeah, and I understand why you guys aren't doing it. I'm just concerned about public safety. You know, if we could do it, I would like to see it happen, but I don't know, that's not up to you guys.
No.
That's up to us.
What happens on the sidewalk? The sidewalk comes in after the first building, after four, then drops in, and then it continues in front of the two buildings. So right in front of the immediate two buildings, yeah, they service our buildings, not the rest of Leonard. And the only way we can appease additional walking area was by doing that open space, and people wanted to go down to the back.
Okay.
That's in that section. And the bus turnoff was proposed between the retail buildings and Building 4, right at the beginning.
We have left area for a future bus to come in here and go back out. Had multiple discussions with Gatcha on that.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I mentioned that road is, it's only like 20 feet wide.
Correct.
I know you've got to make it wider for the trucks.
Yep. Yep.
The road's in poor shit.
Yep.
And overlay's gonna be a Band-Aid. It's gonna be a Band-Aid, and I did some figuring on that, and I figured it at twenty-two feet wide, and I figured at twenty-six hundred feet. It's like six, six thousand three hundred fifty-five square yards. And if you put down, if you reclaimed it, reclaim would cost you about twelve thousand seven hundred, that's what it would cost me to have someone go down and reclaim it. That's where the grader, grating and all. The asphalt, if you put down three inches of binder and two and a half of top, it would cost you, what I have here is a hundred and seventy-six thousand for asphalt. So you're talking like not even two hundred thousand dollars to make that road, a new road, that's gonna last for an industrial park. That's what comes out of my figures. So, I mean, that ain't, that ain't much for a million, hundred million dollar project, so.
Well, we understand, totally understand. And, and we appreciate the help on trying to get the grant that's in place, but, and also remember, we have a heck of a lot of other mitigation. So it's just not this, we have a sewer line that's going down.
Oh, I didn't know that, yeah.
Traffic and everything else, so. But we'll take that under consideration and do what we can to, to make it happen, so.
Can I ask a question related to that, knowing, and I'll just preface it by saying I know nothing about construction? But, so the overlay is what you're proposing, and then your numbers were just for-
Full depth.
Full depth, okay. And so once the development is done, and by the way, thank you very much, I think this is a great thing that's coming into the town. Once it's done and your tenants are in there, who's responsible for the road? Is that, you guys or is that the town?
Well, it's, it's, there's two, it's an, it would be an except, it's, it already is an accepted street now.
So it would be, so I guess, so I guess my concern would be, along with Keith is saying, you know, that's a road that's going to have much heavier vehicles than what it's used to right now. So if we've got a lot of trucks going down there for the new buildings, I would imagine that the road would get chewed up a lot quicker with the overlay than with a regular road, but that's just my too uneducated sense.
Well, you haven't even done boring it, because I talked to that guy last week, so.
Yep.
I don't even know what's in that road underneath, so.
Yeah, I think obviously we wanna make sure the road is done right.
Okay.
And we are the road commissioners.
Right.
So we do have a responsibility to make-
Yes, we do, yeah, and I, and I visualize roads that I've been down recently where the, it kinda caved in after a while, and it's almost like you take your hands off the steering wheel and the car will go by itself. Because it wasn't, obviously wasn't built properly, but, I mean, I would, I would ask that the, Keith have the ability to make sure that that prop, that road is done the way that has to be done. And I would add to that, that if we could put sidewalks down to there, maybe just a lot of Mike, we can send the record to conservation. That in the, in the, in the best interest of public safety, in my opinion, we should have sidewalks. And if they have to infringe on a wetlands a bit more, I'm not sure what's more important, but I don't want them to have to have a hassle. We had, we need a certain width of the road, we're adding for a few extra feet for, for into the wetlands to put sidewalks. And I think in our best interest, that would be everyone's and everyone's best interest and the public safety reasons. I think it's important that we at least discuss it and throw it at them and say, I understand that we're restricted, but we need to do more, you know. And I, I think it's important that we maybe send a letter, Mike, to conservation and ask them to consider looking at that. I'd like to see sidewalks all the way down to the intersection where the, you know, the last phase there is. I mean, beyond that, I'm not that concerned about, but on the road itself that we are responsible for, I'd like to see sidewalks. At least one sidewalk. I know in Massachusetts now, if you do any improvements like on East Main Street, you have to put in two sidewalks. I'm not looking for that. If we can get one, I'd be, I'd be satisfied with it, you know, just to make it safe.
Do you have any time on sewer yet? When are they gonna start that down one-twenty-three?
We are, again, we have a meeting, we had a meeting with the water sewers last week. We have a meeting with the MN, MFN on the fifth, or, yeah, February fifth. And then we are submitting to Mass DOT for permits, road opening permits by the bridges and, and things like that. But our goal is as early as April.
As soon as we can.
Is that project going out to bid July twenty-sixth?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we, we've had some phasing meetings with Mass DOT, and we, we have to be first, basically, that sewer line. So everybody knows this sewer line, zoomed out some, so this is Leonard, this is the properties. This sewer line needs to go all the way to the-
Oh, you're going that way, you're not going the other way.
Correct. Yeah, so we gotta go across one ninety-five bridge, across a Kenee River Bridge, and then down. And they did ask for a stub on our forest main out into this area for future development, and stub, just a stub this way and a stub that way, North Washington for potential future.
I'm planning on having two contractors, two contractors, one in the, doing the buildings and one doing the roadway?
Yes, that's correct. Yeah, correct.
And that, you know, you own the timeline on the sewerage, you don't know?
The what?
The timeline on the sewerage on Main, on East Main?
That's there.
That's us.
Yeah, I know, but we're, we're gonna be doing some, some improvements there too, right?
Right, so that's why they gotta do it this spring and summer, they gotta be in first.
Anything else? Well, I, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to entertain a motion to approve it. I just, again, would add to that, that I would like to see the possibility of additional sidewalks. And also, you know, over the direction of our EPW director to make sure that the road is done properly and into his specifications. Make it right, the first course.
Right.
Anyone else? There'll be a motion.
Well, I'm not sure what-
Yeah, what's the motion?
Motion is to follow, to make improvements based on what Keith has suggested, as far as the road goes. And the section between the buildings and, can you put that, that thing back up, my map back up? If you can. The, the, the sidewalks end right there. Yeah, that's where they're gonna end. I'm suggesting they should go all the way down to the beginning of where they make the turn on Leonard Street.
Which should reach, it should go into the other sidewalk.
Yeah.
Because there is sidewalks from there going over the bridge.
Right, but we should have sidewalks, they're ending the sidewalks because of wetlands, wetlands issue.
How can we prove that though, if there's, if doesn't conservation have to-
Well, we can make a recommendation, that's what I'm suggesting, we recommend that we follow the guidelines of the DPW. We also ask that they consider putting in sidewalks. I mean, other than that, it's our road anyway, I mean, you're just, they're gonna make improvements on it.
Right, some votes. And I, and I think that we need permission to enter into a temporary construction access agreement with the town manager, get in there and do the actual work.
And that's-
Legally, whatever that means.
That can be part of it too. Get all that? You sure? Do you have anything else? Mike? Give me a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you guys.
Good luck.
So, Mr. Chairman, on the, on the project regarding the roads, at what point does it come back to us for approval? What point do we find out whether it's the overlay or the, the actual road?
They would have to come back, because we're insisting right now that it should be a rebuild.
Rebuild, okay, wait, so what we did just tonight is, okay, because, you know, I, I, it's just a part of the project that oftentimes is overlooked with us being the road commissioners?
Yeah.
So I just-
And we'll, I'll put that in the letter, that it's a full rebuild, as Keith said.
Okay.
Because they have to put gas in, and they have to put sewer in, so they're gonna be digging it up.
They're gonna be chewing it up anyway, yeah.
And Keith's right, there should be some borings to find out what's there to begin with. You know, how far down can we actually go?
So if they didn't wanna do that, they'd have to come back and get permission.
Then that makes me feel better, although I feel pretty good about the whole project.
Yeah, it's a good project.
Yeah, I think it's-
I think we're lucky that we have, this is a group that's working on it, right? You know, I mean, they're-
And, and I know they'll do, they'll, they'll do the best they can. I'm not concerned about it. I know they'll work well, so. Okay, next on the agenda, discussion of adding time clocks, this is electronic time clocks.
This is discussion we wanna have with the school committee, right?
Yeah, but here's what I'm thinking. Again, this is something that's gonna involve unions, that's gonna involve department heads. And perhaps what we should suggest is to the superintendent and to the town manager, that they come up with a committee of whatever, five or seven people, to research different companies that offer this electronic time clock. Just so people out there understand, today, in the town of Norton, we still take, we have timesheets. We fill in, manually fill in the timesheets by pen or pencil or whatever. And they're submitted to department head, they're signed off, they're sent over here. We end, we do an analysis of it, we check them all over, make sure everything's right. All the approved days offer are done right, and everything is, is completed. Once that's all done, it's all done the same way we did it nineteen seventy, nineteen sixty. In today's world, you have electronic time clocks. Anyone who has an electronic device from, from a cell phone to a desktop to a, to a laptop, any, anything they have, they have the ability to punch in and out. And it also keeps track of accrued sick time, it takes accrued vacation time. It tells the employee exactly how many hours they have and they don't have. It's all done electronically. At the end of a week, the department head looks at the, at the monitor. If there's anything on there that doesn't, that isn't filled in, they are required to fill it in. If, if Bob Kimmel doesn't come in on Thursday, I call in sick, they're gonna know that I didn't punch in that day, and they need to find out why I didn't punch in that day and put in the appropriate reason. I've been doing this for years. I mean, retail usually is the last thing to get up to date, but we've been using electronic time clocks in my, in my last two business, businesses I work for. And it just makes sense that we should be looking at this. The way we're doing it today is nineteen seventy. And it's ridiculous that we're taking all this time to, to put all this information together. So the suggestion would be, we've met, I think Mary and I have met a guy at the MMA meetings, that they offer a time clock program, but he may not be the only one, there are others out there too. There's other ways, you know, that we can find it. If you wanna get your pay stub, you go electronically online and you do it, you don't mail it anymore. You don't have to hand out envelopes anymore, it's all done electronically. If you wanna know what your yearly wages are, if you need a W-two form.
Who's had my email to me tonight during the meeting?
Right, exactly, all that information is out there. We're doing everything by paper. Yes, Peter?
Um, the company that I work for, Virch, what was they do it, Electronic Food Chronos?
Yep, that's who I used to use too. And it's, it's a good company, and, and they, they've been doing it for years. So we need, and I know, again, it's gonna have to be something we're gonna have to talk about with the unions, but, you know, management has, does have certain rights, and one thing would be to, and this is not, there's no hidden agenda here, this is just coming into the twenty-first century and, and doing it in a way that makes sense, so. Maybe we could have, what do you guys think, have a town manager and the superintendent come up with?
Do, do we need a, a committee, or can we just do request for proposal?
Right, I know, I know, Jan-
Kind of streamline it, you know?
I know the town accountant's been looking at a payroll system, and it would be the same. We talked to the schools and coordinate, make sure we have the same payroll system, so.
Well, that's, that's what I'm concerned about, I wanna make sure that everybody is under one envelope, under one umbrella.
Yeah, maybe have James work with-
And we also research it, like Chronos is out there, this Time Clock Plus is out there. There's probably fifteen others out there that I don't, I don't even know about. What's the best fit for us? Because what I did in retail, I mean, I work at a town, at a town, a government organization. The state, I'm sure, is doing it, you know, I'm sure other towns are doing it. How do we, how do we come up with a, with a plan to do it?
We're doing it now with the police department, kind of as a trial. They were the first to start it last year. So theirs is all done electronically, but I'm not sure of the concept on the checks themselves. But their input of the payroll and everything, they're all electronic, so that we can see how that would work. And then we'll coordinate with the schools and-
It all becomes paperless.
Yeah.
If you wanna take a vacation, you have to put it in online. You want a day off, a personal day off, you have to put in a request, it has to be approved. You can't just take it. You know, if five people ask for it the same day and there's only ten of you working, well, someone's gonna have to give, because you have to, you know, you have to have people to, to run the department. It just puts everything in front of you, so you don't, there's no question about walking into an office one day and there's nobody there.
Right.
In the last contract negotiations, we finally had all paper checks eliminated. So everyone has to have their check direct deposited now, so they're in the mindset of not getting handed a check. So now we just change it, that you won't be getting a stub either, you just go online and keep, it would save a lot.
My only recommendation, reason for forming a small committee was so that they could look at all the options from different companies. You know, come up with one that makes sense for us. What I'm afraid of is we come up with a solution, and we come up with a company, and then somebody says, no, that doesn't work for us. You know, which shouldn't be a problem. But I, I know that, at any time, I knew, I knew if I had vacation time, under the new Massachusetts laws regarding sick time, which is a real, it's a hassle to keep track of it. Because you earn it as you go, this computer system will automatically track it and they add it in increments. And it, it's done automatically, no one has, there's no human contact.
Right.
It's all being done. And at the end of the week, the department head looks at it, makes sure everything's clean, bing, go, they hit a button, it's done. And that's the end of it, so, it's time, yeah, it's time.
Yeah, we'll coordinate with the payroll people and the schools, the business, school business manager, the payroll people here, the accountant, and, I think.
I would say the people who, you know, deal with it on an everyday basis would be more inclined to come up with, I mean, I would imagine that most of the time clock companies out there are pretty similar, so we just have to find one that the people in the town of Norton are comfortable using, James and his kind of part over at the schools, without making it difficult to deal.
You'd be surprised, the last two I used were different.
Yeah, I know they're different, but at the concept, so they just have to find the one that works in a way that they would be most comfortable with. But I don't think we can, like, a regular person wouldn't be able to do this.
When I was suggesting a committee, I wasn't thinking about any of us, I was thinking about people that would actually do it in town hall. Whether it be someone from the schools and someone from the town hall, and these guys can do that. They can all get together and, and come up with a plan, we don't have to, we don't have to be involved in it. I just think it's important that we have the right people making the decision. And I think we should set a time date, a timeline on it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think it's important.
Let's get it.
It'll be here, two years from now, we'll still be talking about it, because two years ago, I was talking about it.
Right.
Well, why don't we just set a timeline that would work with our-
FY-
Next round of our, yeah.
Twenty.
Yeah, so the year-end in June, right? So maybe have something back by the end of March, beginning of April?
So we can be implemented for July one?
I don't know how long it takes to-
Or do we wanna have something back for the next town meeting? Because it may, it may cost a few dollars to buy the software to do, to do this type of typekeeping. Should we have something ready by next town meeting in May?
Yeah.
So by March, it shouldn't take that long to ferret it out?
We could even put in a placeholder on, on the warrant.
Yep.
If we have, if we have, we know they're working on it, I think we should have this thing ready to go. I don't think it's gonna be a lot, like I say, it's not gonna be a lot of work, it's just getting-
Not gonna be a lot of money either, I don't think.
And trained on how to do it, and I tell you, it's not, it's not that difficult. And everyone's life is gonna be easier, it'll save man, manpower, on both sides, it'll save a lot of time. So what we plan on trying to put something together, Mike, for the town meeting in May, see if we can put something together.
It would be, it would be a capital item, I mean.
It's buying, it's basically buying the software. I mean, you can buy electronic time clocks, you can, you can have them in the building if you want to, that are connected to the system, but I don't know if we need that with all the computers and everything we have.
It's all app-based now too?
Yeah, yeah, okay, all right.
Great.
Okay, under old business, we have a discussion of rescheduling the spring town meeting. So our town moderator, way back in July or August, informed us that in ten to twelve months in advance that he was going on a cruise. And having my senior moment, I know I forgot about it, the request. And we went ahead and set the town meeting, we set it up for, what was it, May, what?
Thirteenth.
May thirteenth. So he will not be back in town until May fourteenth. So he will not be back in town until May 14th. And he's asked us to reconsider moving it to the Wednesday. Instead of having it on Monday, May 13th, we have it on Wednesday, May 15th. And I think that's a valid, it's a valid request. So, what do we have to do, Mike?
Just, you just have to vote to continue to change the date, to delay the town meeting to May 15th. And I probably would also, would you want to go and reserve the next Monday, too, just in case?
Yeah, yeah. And I've checked with the schools, and both days they're available. May 15th will be available, and then, I think what the other one was?
Twentieth?
May 15th, it would be May 20th. Yep, yep. May 15th to May 20th.
I had to count my fingers, Jen did that in her head.
All right, so, intended motion to move our spring annual town meeting from Monday, May 13th, to Wednesday, May 15th, with a second day, in case we don't get our business done on May 15th, to have a second night available on Monday, May 20th.
So moved.
2019.
Town council is available for the 15th.
Okay. And you probably should let them know about the 20th, too, just in case. Between now and then, I'm not sure what's going to be controversial, so we'll find, we'll find out if we get closer. Okay, we're motion and second, any further discussion? See any others in favor?
Aye.
Yep.
We're done. So the town meeting will be held this year on Wednesday, May 15th, 2019, at 7:00 PM at the Norton.
High School.
On High School.
Grand High School.
High School Auditorium, right? Unless we have to move that, too, but.
Yeah, we're reserved, we'll reserve the gym.
Gym and the auditorium.
Auditorium and the cafeteria.
Cafeteria, okay. Okay, Tom Hedges' report.
Just an update, the building on the town hall community center project, and I did say community center, because that's what they're calling these buildings now, rather than council on aging, because there's so much more that gets done there as far as the human services aspect of things. And it's a building that would also be used by other groups. So, the building committee is working a lot, great with the architects, and they plan on coming to your meeting, one of your meetings in February, I'll check with them and see if they'll be at the first one in February, to give a presentation on, they're finalizing a lot of their numbers now, crunching a lot, and so then they'll come to you with their proposal on what they're looking at for the buildings.
And one of the, one of the places we're looking at is possibility home street. How's that project going down there, do you know?
It actually is moving along, and the EPA has now agreed they're going to take down the smokestack.
Oh, good.
And pull the oil tanks out of the ground, so that.
Even better.
That's, that saves a lot. And we, we've been working, this morning, we're working quite a while on where filing a grant for an assessment grant for any other clean, cleanup that might have to be done down there. So unfortunately, like, we had a question, and we had to call the federal government today, so that didn't get answered, but, so hopefully they get back soon, because the grants are due next week. But we've got everything pretty much finalized, we're working with our engineering consultants on it, so we're putting that in $350,000 to help us with our assessment grant on that. And I know when I talked to the building committee, they had said to me about that site, they said, well, you said it may be two years, you know, and I said, well, if you move forward in May, say, and got this project approved, your money's not available till July, then you got to go out and get an OPM. Then you got to work with the OPM to develop an RFQ for a designer, architect designer, then the designer's got to design something that you then have to approve, then you got to go out to bid to get someone to build the building. So it's two years, a lot of that time will be eaten up, you know, so. Hopefully, we can have it cleaned up before two years, but it's not that long in the scheme of things with everything that has to be done.
Yeah, I think the, I know the smokestack, we had looked at that way back, thinking we might be able to salvage that, keep it, as part of the history, but they said it's about ready to fall down, so, you know, it's good that they're going to.
And before they start digging the tanks out, they're afraid that'll fall, so they have to take that down.
It's a good idea to take it down, make it go away. Okay.
We're going to bring the bricks down to the southern, no.
You can recycle the bricks and use them when you do town hall.
Sidewalks.
Yeah.
So, so it would be a good site. It would have the town hall, the community center, plus hopefully we'll put some walkways in along the water there and everything.
They're very pretty there.
The parking, right, because they have that huge parking lot.
Right, there'd be some parking by the COA building on that, on that side of the road where the buildings are, and then where the parking lot is on the other side of the street would have that whole parking lot.
Lot of parking there.
I'm hoping we don't need to use any of the parking on Cross Street. I'd actually like to just take all that pavement out, and right now, the road kind of floods down there at times, if we could take that pavement out and create like, Jen will get me if I don't say the right thing, but you know, like drainage area there, or something, but down the road. And we met today, VHB, State Highway, Sharon Everett from KP Law, Keith, myself, Joanne from his office, Frank Fornia from Water and SOAR, Water and SOAR's engineer, to go over the plans again and finalize all timelines. Our appraiser was also there, so, on the Route 123 project, so things are moving forward. And the advertisement date, well, first of all, VHB, the, our engineers for the project, they have to finalize all easement plans by February 15, get those to the state. They have to have a recordable plan done by April 1st, and our appraiser will work with all that and hope to come back here in May to have you sign off on all the takings, which will then have to be recorded. And then the project will go out to bid on July 27th. And all the taking information, after you approve everything, sign everything, and the recordings, everything has to be to the federal highway by July 1st, so. Then bids will begin in July, they'll probably award in October. And the first phase of the project is the traffic signals, and then however they work along there.
We still have to consider, why not, we want to allow the night work, right, at some point?
Yeah.
I recall that would reduce the, it could reduce it by a couple of years.
Yeah.
We allow that? The project would be two years less, it'd go from five to three. So, okay. Anything else?
Just, we're working on the internet speed in this building, Shane, you'll be happy. When they were, we're about ready to kick off the online permitting. I think the building inspector may have actually got a permit today, online. So we're about to kick that off. And when they were putting all the equipment and they were commenting how slow the internet was here, so we had our computer people do a test at the router, and the download speed was 12, it should be at least 100, and the upload speed was 1.2, and should also be 100. So we met with Comcast, and we're increasing the speed. We had like the basic internet that, when it first came out, so now we're increasing the speed. And also, our computer people are looking at all the switches that we have in the building to make sure that they're all up to date to handle the new speed. So hopefully that'll work out, speed things up, because now, you know, we're having that, we're having the Rave program, doing so much more online, the new payroll system, so we want to speed up the internet here, so we can.
Okay, anything else? So I can report mail.
Nothing.
I have one, this was given to me at the last weekend's MMA, I talked to Mike about it, that tax exemptions on solar farms. We, we, we've been doing some pilot programs, but I guess there are some towns that are allowing these solar farms to be put on private property, and now the companies are coming back and asking for tax exempts, exemptions on it, right? Is that how it's working?
Yeah, they're getting, they're saying they're exempt from paying property taxes, and they're winning it at the appellate tax board. But where we have the pilots in place, we're all set.
It's all set.
Except for we have one project that's refused, because they're going by this, so we're about to be fighting with them over that.
Now, who approves that? Who approves it? That's Hill Street.
Hill Street.
The one that they're putting.
It's already up and.
Yeah, it's up and running. Who approves this? Does that planning board approves the solar farms?
They, the planning board approves.
Pilot.
The, they'll approve the project, and then the taxing is done by the assessors, and the pilots are done by the assessors.
What do we have to do to put some kind of bylaw or something in place to let people know that if they do want to put up solar farms, even on private property, they have to work out a pilot with the town? Is there a way we can get around that?
I, I'll check, I would doubt it. I don't know if the department, state will let that happen, but I'll look into that.
If I want to put a solar farm behind my house right now, and I go to town hall, I have to go to the planning board.
Right.
Right? And I have to get permission from the building, the building department to build it.
Yep.
But I don't have to go any further, I don't have to, I don't have to work out a pilot arrangement?
You don't have to, the risk, we always tell them, is we're going to tax them. So we're going to tax the Hill Street, well, they're taxing the Hill Street one, and now if they want to fight it, they got to go to the appellate tax board. So it's a risk for both us and them, if we end up in the appellate tax board.
So again, how do we, how do we?
I think the thing is, what we need to do is have the legislators look at that and change that. I know they want to encourage solar, but still, if a town is putting up with that facility in our town, we ought to, we ought to be paid for that.
Right.
And we, we can't stipulate that at the beginning of a project?
I'll, I'll check on that and see if that's something legally we can do right now, or if we need.
And then we just make a standard operating procedure, anybody that comes in, this is doing business with Norton, if we're legally allowed to.
Right. We'll, we'll try that, but also, we should talk to our legislators, this needs to, and I imagine, there's a lot of towns now that'll be doing that.
You present a warrant.
It's just the tip of the iceberg. For Hill Street right now, so if they, if it was to rule against us, what does that property pay?
If they ruled against us, they wouldn't pay anything.
No taxes at all? So are they like, like the agriculture thing, where as long as.
The property tax, they pay.
Well, they'd, they'd pay property tax, but not personal tax on the, on the solar.
On the equipment itself. So I think what we need to do is, is what, do you departments know that, that any approval box of that, that if someone comes in and wants to build one of these, they have to come to us first?
I think what the intent was originally was that if someone puts solar in for their own use, then it's not taxable. But somehow, these companies are changing that, even though they're selling the solar, somehow they're trying to say it's.
It's almost like they have to put a limit on the size, right, of, you know, if you have a solar farm in your own backyard, not to exceed so many, I don't know how you judge a solar farm.
Like the chickens.
Like the chickens, yeah, like the chickens, if you're selling those eggs.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with you on that.
Yeah, town of Chelton has been, they have a lot. They have a lot of them, and they're now being challenged under Clause 45 of the state law, Chapter 59. They claim that they're, they're solar developers, that they're, that's tax exempt. And then they're losing millions of dollars in Chelton because of it.
What about the, the solar farm that's proposed next to the LG North? Is that not private property?
It is.
And that's, that's exactly, that's a perfect example why we need to have rules and regulations in place.
Right.
You know, and I think we need to find out right away what we need to do to, I guess the question is, how do we get them to come to us for a pilot first? If we have a pilot employees, we don't have to worry about it.
Right.
For 20 years.
Right. So how do we advise our department heads, if somebody comes in and wants to put in a solar farm, how do we make sure they come into us first and say, here's my, here's my proposal, here's my payment in lieu of taxes, my pilot? So that they can't come back and say, no, 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 I'm exempt, after they build it? Yeah, we, we need to find that out sooner than later, so, you want this?
No, I haven't, I'm, I'm just, Chelton's a million dollars, I don't know how many solar farms they've got to have.
Losing a million bucks a year.
Wow.
So.
You have to have a lot of megawatts.
Yep, says on Route 20, they have a lot of them, right along Route 20. All right, anyway, if you can find that out, Mike, that would, maybe you get back, what's at the next meeting? Or it's not what we have to do, if anything? We, we have, even if it's a policy of this board, that any solar farm requests have to come to us first, you know, so we can talk to them about it.
Eventually, is that something that has to be in our, our regulations? Like, is that something we have to have a town meeting vote on?
We'll see what council says.
Okay.
Yeah, it's fine.
So I was just going to say, if so, maybe we should consider maybe putting it on the spring town meeting.
Yeah, but if we can get some answers by our next meeting, we can decide what to do.
Chelton, I don't know how big Chelton is, I can't imagine.
Small town.
They have 21 operational solar farms.
It's a small town.
So they had a lot of space.
Yep. Motown population. That million bucks is probably worth, that's a lot of money to them. Okay. Anyway, if we can check into that, that would be great. We're moving along?
Lock this up.
Okay.
Move the question.
On the warrants, on the warrants and minutes. Chair intended motion to approve payroll warrant, PR 19-15, for the weekend of January 12, 2019, dated January 17, 2019, the amount of $1,452,802.63.
So moved.
Second.